Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 7, 2016. We will begin today with the flag salute led by our county executive officer, David Bosch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now have the statement of meeting procedures read by our board clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, June 7, 2016. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you very much. We will move now to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been approved, have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and that item may be moved for discussion. Is there anyone on the board or in the public who would like to remove anything from consent for discussion?
I am.
All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Yes, sir?
I would like item 18L. Yeah, 18L. Let me move forward.
18L Lucy?
Yeah, L Lima, yeah.
Okay. All right. What is the... All right, this is a roll call.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Hi.
Montgomery?
Yes. We will now move to item 18L. Supervisor Euler.
I just would like a little conversation on this, on that with some folks who are advocating for it, and my question of them was that none of the improvements that are being proposed are within what would otherwise be considered the take area for a future Auburn Dam. Is that correct? That's what I was told.
Yeah, and that's something that we need to introduce.
Oh, Mark Wright out Public Works and Facilities. Yeah, that would be evaluated through the permit with Bureau of Reclamation and the licenses from them.
Okay. That doesn't exactly give me the answer I was looking for in terms of whether or not I want to support moving forward on this. If I have the assurance, as I was told in the meeting with the individual that was advocating for this, that none of these improvements were within the take area, then I could support it. If I don't have that assurance, then I can't. So I don't know. What you're saying is, we won't know until we have to vote on it in order to find out what's in it, is that what you're...
Well, and I apologize, I haven't looked at the design to date to really understand. You know, I imagine Bureau of Reclamation would require that. When we were looking at a prior project in the canyon, that was their firm position.
Okay. And the folks who are requesting that we take this action are actually represented here today, then?
I don't see anyone in the audience from...
All right, well, I, you know...
If it's any help, I did take a look at the map, and it does fall, it's below the proposed dam and take area, and it is...
And again, that's what I was told. I was just hoping for some independent confirmation, that's all.
I did check with State Parks, and it's their interpretation of the proposal that it is outside of the take area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, Mark, this particular issue is going to be fleshed out in any environmental review and consultation with the county, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll have an opportunity to comment on environmental documents. I'm sure it'll go through a long process.
So if there's, you know, a border issue, or maybe a small overlap, we'll still have the opportunity to address that when the time comes.
Yeah, and we'll carry that message Supervisor Euler, when we do comment.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments on that from the board? Anyone in the public wish to comment or question on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
I oppose.
All right. Having completed the consent agenda, we will move on to public comment. Anyone may address the board on items not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person, since time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, public comment period will be taken up at the end of regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. So now is the time to come forward for public comment if you would like to address anything not on today's agenda.
Good morning, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Ron Lawrence, and I'm a resident of Rockland, and previously in Weimar prior to that. I've been, lived in Placer County for more than 15 years, and I'm proud of our cities and our county. We do a lot of things right in Placer County, in particular our public safety, which has always been a priority for our local governments. I want to address you briefly this morning and join my colleagues, the Placer County Police Chiefs, our district attorney, and our Placer County Sheriff on a topic of serious concern to us. We are aware that the Board of Supervisors has directed county staff to solicit information and frame out a county ordinance for you to consider regulating medical marijuana in Placer County. We recognize and applaud the board for taking the important steps to regulate medical marijuana, just as our cities have already done. But we ask that you weigh the impacts of your decisions carefully, and we strongly urge you to enact an ordinance that is in alignment with the city ordinance is already in place, which has been serving our medical marijuana patients and our cities very well. Realizing that you've not heard county staff's presentations yet and not taken the matter into consideration, I have personally attended about a half a dozen of the county staff presentations on medical marijuana, and I don't know what direction staff was given by the board, but the presentations have begun with the belief that staff wanted to gather information to inform their draft proposal of the ordinance to you. What became alarming to us months ago was that the county staff presentations that we have listened to seemed to be anything but soliciting information or input. On the contrary, the presentations have led the listener to believe that only options for Placer County is to enact an ordinance that would allow outdoor medical marijuana grows, to curtail current illegal operations, to allow commercial medical marijuana grows in an effort to capitalize on taxation, and to consider allowing medical marijuana dispensaries for the benefit of medical marijuana patients. There's a cartoon video on the ag commissioner's website and presented by county staff that suggests this. What's more alarming is that also posted on the ag commissioner's webpage is a statement that says, although Placer County does not permit medical marijuana at this time, prospective growers can begin to educate themselves right now on a number of requirements designed to protect the environment as related to medical marijuana cultivation. It is clear to us that staff is headed in its specific direction without considering having that an ordinance divergent from our cities is a bad idea that will cause significant impacts for our county. Our communities depend on elected leaders to set good policy that will maintain a healthy and safe environment, and I'm proud to say that our Board of Supervisors and our city councils have always shown good leadership to ensure this. I hope this trend continues in our future. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, Veronica Blake, representing the Placer Community Foundation. I have two issues to bring to your attention this morning. I'm no surprise that one of them is the need for affordable and workforce housing in Placer County. In April, the median home price was $415,000, and according to your housing element, the lowest-income families can afford a home price of $84,000, and moderate-income families that have an average income of $82,000 can afford a home price of $337,000. This is a serious economic development issue, and when we see people having to spend more than 30% of their income on housing, they can't spend that on other economic engines. Housing affordability, you know, is an issue across the state and the country, but what is unique to Placer County is that we are not yet built out. There are numerous housing developments and various stages of planning, and through your current policy, you allow for different options for affordable housing, whether that be in loofahs, dedication of land, building, or a combination. With 70,000 more homes to be built, it's important for this board to develop policies, incentives, and creative ways that actually help our developers construct the affordable housing units. We only have to look to the eastern part of the county to see that a failure to do this has even more serious and expensive implications. The second issue that I want to bring to your attention today are the results of the big day of giving. Even with this year's technology failure, the community came together and gave $7.1 million to 570 nonprofits in the region. Ninety-five of those were from Placer County, and in Placer, we raised $848,000 in that day. Individual organizations that are noteworthy, I wanted to point out to you, is once again in Placer County, Placer Land Trust raised the most at almost $121,000. The Gathering Inn raised almost $30,000. Acres of Hope raised over $15,000. The Auburn Symphony over $20,000, and Casa of Placer County almost $27,000. The big day of giving has raised visibility of the important work that the nonprofits do in our community, and over the past three years, donors have given $2.2 million to our Placer nonprofits. And I just want to thank the board and the County of Placer for being really such a terrific partner on that project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great news.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Will Taylor. I'm from Placer Independent Resource Services. I want to echo what Veronica Blake just said about the need for affordable housing here in Placer County. We have opportunities, such as with the Greyhawk subdivision, to build out affordable units for people of low, moderate, and median incomes in the county. And this is important for many reasons, as you all know, and we've said it before. But we really want to discourage any use of in-loofahs in building out, and really encourage that affordable units and workforce housing be built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Yes, please come forward, stranger.
Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development, for four more days.
We'll miss you.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board from the bottom of my heart. I truly appreciate all the support all of you gave me over the last 10 years. It's been wonderful. I've had great experiences everywhere I've worked, all throughout my career, starting from graduating from Rutgers University in 1977, before Supervisors Montgomery and Euler were even born.
Hardly, but thank you.
The publicity for them hasn't been so good. They peaked right around that time. All the way through my state service for almost 17 years, working in the Duke Magin, Wilson, Davis, and Schwarzenegger administration. But I saved the best for last, and that was Placer County, for sure. And I think the office is in great shape, I really do. Mr. Paul Griffith will carry on. He's, I've worked with hundreds, if not thousands, of economic developers through my career, not millions and millions, but lots, and Paul is right up there at the top. Our film office does great things. Beverly Lewis is just terrific, so well-respected statewide. And our business advantage network supervised by Marcy Schmidt, they're terrific professionals. They do so much throughout the county. So I leave with a heavy heart. I want to give a special thanks and acknowledgement to Supervisor Holmes, particularly for his, the role that he plays in mental health awareness. As some know, my wife was diagnosed with a very rare form of dementia earlier this year, so I'm going on to a career as a caregiver for her. But I want to make sure that I let everybody know that I so appreciate what you do and the priority that you give this office and economic development in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, please come forward.
Good morning, my name is Oscar Schaefer. I've been a resident of Placer County since 1970. I've been here for the second time over the same issue. When we last met, when I was here, was on Tuesday, May 3. This is what has happened. I'm sorry to see that Chairman White Gant is not here. He was supposed to address this issue one week after May the 3. I wish he would be here to respond to that. On this administrative decision that was done by the county, this affects all the residents of Placer County. Verizon went and got people from outside the county. You're aware of it, Ms. Montgomery, because you had your aide contact, or I contacted your aide, and your aide said she was going to be going out with Mr. Inavalli, who is the deputy director of planning. I also addressed you, also Jack Durant, concerning the Native Americans. Thank, I would like to especially thank Jessica Brown, who came up here, all the way from Lake County, to support this issue. Unfortunately, we didn't get any support from our local Maidu or Meowak Indians. Yet when they wanted our support, when all the churches, all the community people were against those casinos, we went and spoke for them. When we asked for their help, we got zero. I'd like you to relate something, Jack, and that is that if, when you see them, tell them, please, that in Spanish, because this they may understand better than English, que cuando necesitabas nuestro apoyo, te lo damos, y hoy no diste nada. That means basically you didn't help us out. If I sound a little upset, it's because I have been here a long time. I put in my dues. I was in law enforcement, I'm now a teacher, and it's about time we wake up and start putting people in office that will act. I'm glad for this election, this is a turning point. We have two extremes here. Okay, that's only 58 minutes? Yay! Okay, I'd like to also end this in a little Mexican satire, and don't take this political. But I just got back from Mexico, and I'm going back to go and teach at pesos to improve our relationship with Mexico. You think we don't have a problem now? We have a problem. When you call people rapists, criminals, you can't get away with that and not have an international effect. So I have to go over there, along with all the other people who represent Placer County, to say, hey, this is not the way America is. We believe everybody has the same opportunity. Imagine that these folks are going to get up there, if someone came in who called us that, are going to get up there, they're our neighbors, just like our Canadians, and we're cutting off the bridge here by making these type of statements. But anyway, I'm going to leave you with a little satire. Go ahead, sorry. Go ahead and build that wall, and better yet, put a mout in it. You know, mout with water? Put alligators in it. Come back in an hour, and we'll have boots and belts for sale at peso prices. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Sir? After the meeting that you came to last month...
Thank you, Jack, for remembering that. I'm sorry if I use a Jack.
You asked for a meeting with me.
Yes, sir.
I have yet to get a call in my office. I take offense, sir, at your characterization of this board is not being responsive. I have been more than open to have a meeting with you. I'm waiting for the phone to ring.
Okay, well, let me just address that.
No, I'm done.
I did call your, I did call your office, and I did speak to the lady you told me to speak to. I never got a call back from her.
Okay.
So maybe that was lack of communication, but it still is the fact that no one got back to me.
She's here today.
Okay.
I talked to her today.
But you know, that issue is still there.
And in hopes of moving the board meeting along, I know there's a lot of people here for a specific agenda item. I would request that you get ahold of Supervisor Duran's district aide. I think if you go to the front desk right now, you can probably get ahold of her and set a meeting.
Right. If I offend anybody, it's because I did do my diligence. As you know, I contacted your lady who went up with Mr. Inavalli.
Yes.
It sounds like, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and I, you know, I did that.
All right.
And she never got back, right? So don't characterize me as not doing the due effort. I'm here in front of you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
I hope so.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comment under public comment at this time? All right, seeing no additional public comments, we are going to close public comment. We'll move at this time to board member, oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in Tahoe who would like to make a public comment? I see an empty desk and a set of very attractive flags, but no humans.
No one here. Thank you.
All right, sounds like there's no one in Tahoe. Then we will move to board member reports. Is there any board member that would like to report? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, on my way home, I go out to Bell Road, and the Timberline Project is, there's bulldozers out there, there's dirt moving. They're beginning the first phase with an independent living building with 90 units, and there'll be 20 duplexes in that first phase. So anyhow, they're doing the infrastructure, and I'm not sure yet whether they're going to continue that road, whether they started on Richardson Drive on the way through to Richardson on where the park is. So anyhow, things are happening out in North Auburn, finally, after, what, it's been five or six years since we approved that project. And so they're moving forward on it, so I'm pleased to see that.
Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just briefly, I think the last time I had a chance to talk to my colleagues in general about the Golden Sierra Job Training Agency was when we were dealing with Nevada County having withdrawn, and we had the unfunded liability issue that the remaining counties, Elrod, Placer, and Alpine Counties were going to have to absorb. I have requested that our executive director, Jason Buckingham, come before our board at some point in the not-too-distant future, just to give you all an update as to what's going on. There was a reauthorization, finally, of the Workforce Investment Act last year. It's now the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, and it will affect service delivery, particularly in some of the rural areas. And so I just thought it important that board members be up to speed, since you might hear from some folks in terms of how we've historically provided the job training, job placement-type services. Since that's going to change, you might, we might all benefit from an update of that. So at some point in the not-too-distant future, Jason will be here and we'll be getting that update.
Excellent. I think we will all look forward to hearing that. Thank you. Anything else? Supervisor Duran? Nothing? Okay. This time, we will move to our 9:10 timed item. This is a Public Works and Facilities item. We are going to be presenting a commendation recommending John Ramirez for 25 years of dedicated public service to the County of Placer and its citizens. John, if you would come stand in a place of honor, or humiliation, depending on how you, how you think about it, that would be delightful.
Okay.
So we have here a lovely commendation, which I am going to read, because John's accomplishments and his history with the county are numerous, but frankly do need to be mentioned. So, "In the matter of a commendation recognizing John Ramirez for 25 years of dedicated public service to the County of Placer and its citizens, whereas John Ramirez provided 25 years of exemplary service to the County of Placer and its citizens through his position as parks administrator before retiring from the Department of Public Works and Facilities, and whereas during John's tenure, the county saw a time of significant growth and change, and John oversaw the operation and development of 40 parks, beaches, and campgrounds, over 100 miles of trails, 1,650 acres of recreational open space, and 156 acres of landscape grounds." No wonder you were tired all the time, John. "Whereas among John's many accomplishments, he was personally committed throughout the development of the Hidden Falls Regional Park, Granite Bay Community Park, Ronald L. Feist Park, Cisco Grove Gould Park, Franklin School Community Park, Applegate Park, Trailer Ranch Reserve, Trailer Ranch Nature Preserve, Tree Lake Park, and Dry Creek Community Park, and whereas John made a personal appeal before the United States Congress to facilitate a transfer of Forest Service property for the Squaw Valley Community Park, and worked closely with the community throughout the development of this beautiful recreational resource, whereas John truly mentored those who worked closely with him by providing continual training and growth opportunities, John will be missed by all for his reassuring disposition, wide smile, and laughter. And whereas John shares his enthusiasm for the outdoors, tennis, backpacking, camping, dog training, hunting, and bicycling with all of those around him who can keep up, and whereas John actively shared his love of the outdoors through many years of leadership in a local Boy Scouts troop, where he encouraged numerous scouts through the growth and development process necessary to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas John is an exemplary family man, who takes great pride in his marriage of 35 years to Maxine, two grown children, and his large extended family throughout California. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held June 7, 2016, to acknowledge with great appreciation John's exceptional service, and extends sincere wishes to both he and Maxine for a fulfilled retirement and great success in their future. Congratulations, John." Let me come down, and we'll get the quick pictures for the PIO office, and then we will, would love to hear some comments from you, if we could, and anyone else who might want to have something to say about John, we'd love to hear that as well.
Pretty outstanding stuff. I'd like to kind of start by flip-flopping the thank you and turn it around and say thank you, board and CEO David Bosch, for all the years of wonderful support to the Parks Division. Wouldn't have happened without all that ongoing support, and it's really unique in California. I belong to quite a few park associations, and I know how it is elsewhere, and I've been very, very blessed and happy to have worked for you here. Last week, as I was mountain biking with Steve Heckert, who recently retired from building maintenance, Steve asked me, he said, John, you've been retired about six months now. Do you miss work? And I told Steve what I miss is being with my staff. And I'd like to share just a few examples of what I meant when I said that to Steve. In the mornings, Tim Stoffler, Tim Art would both greet me with big white smiles and just really make my day, kickstart my day every day. Our wonderful park secretary, Carrie Taylor, is here. She's super efficient. She always keeps things light, and I really love working with you, Carrie. So glad you came this morning. And even though he worked for me, I've always looked up to our park planner, Andy Fisher. Andy's got just a non-stop motor. He works whatever hours it takes to build parks and trails and to help me out whenever I needed it. Then he goes home and spends a lot of time with activities with his beautiful wife Shannon and their seven children, and that impresses me even more. I remember when Mary Dietrich announced to us that she was retiring last year, and she got kind of teary-eyed, and I kind of wondered why it affected her like that. But before I left work, the park workers invited me to a barbecue with them. They told me they really liked working with me and that they really respected me. Then they showed me a PowerPoint, pictures from throughout my career, a lot I hadn't seen before. They put it to Hawaiian music, and I got to admit, my emotions that poured out of me put Mary's to shame. Thanks a lot, guys. During these past few months, it's really been overwhelming for me and humbling to receive so many ceremonies and wonderful gifts, acknowledging me and thanking me for doing a job that I really loved and with people that I really care about. Of course, I'm not able to thank everyone that I've grown close to over the last 25 years, so I want to give a collective thank you to all my friends and fellow Placer County workers. Thank you all.
John, I just thank you for your good work with Placer County. I've attended several of the park meetings, and always a great group of people. Who doesn't like parks? But a great group of members on your advisory board, and I really appreciate the way you handled them and how you guided them to make the proper decision. And I just enjoyed my time getting to meet with the members and have some fellowship with them, and that had to do with your leadership as a park administrator. So thank you so much for your career and wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. It's nice having you at the meetings.
Supervisor Euler? Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, I am always amazed by your ability to walk into a room of folks that are otherwise not necessarily happy and leave that room with a much better feeling in the room than when you got there. Even though we think, you know, parks are all about picnics and fun times, they can be the source of quite a bit of controversy. Whether it's locating them or assigning the use between rugby and lacrosse and soccer and little league and softball and having all those folks together in a room. You did a masterful job of working with the community to help them understand the limitations of the facilities. And also by doing so, pointing out where there were opportunities for the community to get engaged and help us in expanding our offerings. For instance, the Feist Park and the way that we were able to work with some of the service clubs and enhance the offering there. Because you did a very nice job of explaining to folks that while yes, we do collect fees to help build these things, additional support is necessary to get everybody everything they want. And you're never going to arrive there, but you just, you have a way about you that made it just so much better in working with the various organizations and the various groups to address their issues, their concerns, and that is certainly a skill that is rare and will be missed. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I appreciate working for you during both of your terms with the community in Granite Bay. They were very engaged and good to work with.
Thank you.
And I want to take the opportunity, we've already thanked you. We had a special Squaw Valley MAC meeting where we had cake, by the way. Just saying. Because John has just been an absolutely integral part of that community, particularly as relates to the Squaw Valley Park itself. You know, there's this phrase that we sort of throw around sometimes when something seems unachievable and we say, "Oh, that would take an act of Congress to make that happen." This actually took an act of Congress to make the Squaw Valley Park happen and John was absolutely instrumental in convincing Congress that this was the right thing to do. So, John, your name comes up at pretty much every meeting at the Squaw Valley MAC, all good, don't worry. And when some of the MAC members saw that this was on today's agenda, they asked me to please, again, thank you for your service to the county, thank you to the service for their community, and to wish you all the best of everything. Enjoy those bike rides, go play some pickleball, there's lots of pickleball carts around now, including some coming soon to Squaw Valley. But thank you so much for all your efforts. You've just been a delight to work with and I hope you have as much fun and as long as you possibly want to recreate and be retired. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say anything about John or, you know, pro-con?
Lee Bastian, Sheridan MAC, and I want to thank John because before the Sheridan Park became a county park, it was under Sheridan Recreation Inc. And he kept us, the Sheridan MAC Board, out of trouble and made it a nice county park.
Thank you, Lee. Anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, John Ramirez. All right, at this time we will move to our 9:15 item. This is a Health and Human Services item. We're receiving an update on Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Cynthia Bigby and Shannon Quigley presenting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Vice Chairman Montgomery and fellow board members. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Cindy Bigby and I am the Program Manager for the Adult System of Care over older adult services, which includes Adult Protective Services. I'm here with Shannon Quigley, the Elder Abuse Prosecutor from the Placer County District Attorney's Office.
Good morning.
Together with our respective agencies, we are here to request that the Board of Supervisors proclaim June of 2016 to be Placer County Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Our elders comprise 25% of Placer County's population and many of our elder neighbors endure abuse and suffering every day. These frightened elders are from all walks of life, all races, and all ethnic groups and they live in your neighborhoods. Some may not be able to care for themselves while others have become dependent, both physically and financially, on those who abuse them. Due to the mental and physical limitations, they become vulnerable victims targeted by perpetrators who desire control and financial gain. This abuse can leave an elder isolated, neglected, financially depleted, and physically wounded. Placer County Adult System of Care and the District Attorney's Office work together on a daily basis to respond to the increasing number of reports called into our 24-hour intake line. In the last fiscal year, Adult Protective Services received approximately 3,500 reports of elder abuse, with financial abuse being the most prevalent. Adult Protective Services responds to each report and when criminal conduct is involved, we work with law enforcement and the District Attorney's Office.
Thanks to referrals made by Adult Protective Services and our other good citizens, the District Attorney's Office investigates and prosecutes criminals who abuse our elderly citizens. In 2015, our office prosecuted over 200 cases involving elder abuse and over half of those involved financial abuse. When our office begins to prosecute a case, our partnership with Adult Protective Services is essential to ensuring that the victims receive the services that they need. Our office employs a victim advocate who is dedicated to supporting our senior citizens and together with Adult Protective Services, that advocate provides our elderly victims with counseling, transportation, housing, restraining order assistance, and financial aid. For example, recently our office prosecuted a case involving an elderly couple who was terrified by their son. He was aggressive and he had committed violent acts against them before. The son had brutally beaten his father in the past and now returned home yelling profanities and threatening to assault his father again. When police arrived, they heard the threats and they promptly arrested the son. The District Attorney's Office filed charges for the physical assault of his father and four threats. And our victim advocate, along with Adult Protective Services, set up an in-home meeting with the couple where it was soon discovered that they suffered from moderate dementia. With their son, their primary caretaker, in jail, they were having difficulties completing their everyday tasks, maintaining proper hygiene, and remembering to take their daily medication. Thankfully, Adult Protective Services was there to help. The caseworker placed notes throughout the house to remind the couple of their daily chores and visited the couple every day to make sure that they took their medication. And with the help of another family member, they were able to safely relocate that couple to an assisted living facility. In the meantime, our office worked with the couple to put protective measures in place, such as a no-contact criminal protective order, and to successfully send the son to prison for two years. This gave the couple the peace of mind that their son would not find them, contact them, or hurt them again. Not all cases involving elder abuse end in the successful criminal prosecution of a perpetrator, but in those cases, Adult Protective Services is still there to provide any necessary services.
Adult Protective Service referrals are often made by relatives or neighbors who are concerned about an elderly citizen. When an elder doesn't have an appropriate caretaker, they may still suffer from self-neglect, another form of elder abuse. Recently, Adult Protective Services received a call from a concerned citizen who knew about an 84-year-old woman who was living with her disabled adult son and two large dogs in a long-term motel. The caller was concerned that the disabled son was not able to support his mother and her medical needs. Because of the mother's severe medical health issues, Adult Protective Services assigned their specialized caseworker, who is also a public health nurse, to the case. The worker visited with the mother and son at the hotel to begin the investigation and develop a case plan. The case plan involved and resulted in making sure that the mother saw a physician, providing flu and pneumonia vaccines onsite at the motel, and supplying a free cellphone to the mother and son so the mother and son could easily communicate with family members and service providers going forward. The worker also helped the son complete the necessary paperwork for several programs, including in-home supportive services, to assist in their daily needs ongoing. Our agency's intervention was able to prevent further neglect and abuse of this elderly mother and her disabled son by connecting the family to resources and services they so desperately needed.
Unfortunately, by the time Adult Protective Services and the District Attorney's Office is involved, our elderly citizens have already been traumatized by emotional, physical, and financial abuse. More importantly, in many of these cases, they could have been prevented if the elderly victim knew how to protect themselves and their neighbors knew how to intervene. For example, there are many elder abuse scams that are prevalent in our county, fake lotteries or IRS scams. And the elders in our community who fall victim to these scams, they lose their homes, their retirements, or their life savings. We cannot undo that hardship and we cannot undo that abuse, but we can prevent it. That is why it is important for our agencies to work together to inform the community about elder abuse, how to identify it, how to report it, and what our agencies can do to help someone who is suffering from elder abuse. Our agencies work together to dedicate the month of June to Elder Abuse Awareness. Together, we are providing educational seminars for our elderly citizens in senior living complexes and in independent and assisted living facilities. We have also collaborated with Placer County's Community Agency Multidisciplinary Elder Team and the Older Adult Advisory Commission to host an event on June 21st at the Auburn Garden Theater. Each member of the Board has received a pamphlet about the event and a ribbon to represent Elder Abuse Awareness Month. In hosting this elder abuse awareness event, we hope to educate the general public on how to identify, prevent, and report elder abuse. And together with the help of the Board of Supervisors and today's requested proclamation, we hope to demonstrate Placer County's commitment to assisting our elderly citizens who have already become victims of abuse and by acknowledging the importance of increasing awareness of elder abuse in Placer County. Again, we thank you for your time and your unwavering support of our Placer County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board members, any comments on this?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I know that the growth of elder abuse can be a subtle growth and I'm speaking from one of my family members, my older father-in-law. And his daughter, you know, kept coming to him and wanting, "Can you loan me some money? Can you..." And it went on and on and on until the other family members figured it out, but it was going on for a couple of, two or three years. And he was fearful of answering the door, knowing that someone was going to come and ask for more. Anyhow, but it's a subtle growth and family members feel, you know, sympathetic to their children and grandchildren, but they're taken advantage of so much. And by the time it becomes an issue, it may be too late. So it's very important for the work that you do and I look forward to the June 21st workshop. So thanks a lot.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I echo what Supervisor Holmes says. You know, elder abuse is something that I experience even in my professional career as a tribal attorney. And I had one situation where tribal chairman who had most of the power to run the government that, you know, was responsible for millions of dollars, was being manipulated by family members and resulted in some tremendous damage to the tribe and the local community. So it is something that doesn't, it isn't, you know, one particular community, it reaches multitudes of communities and has devastating effects, not only for the people that, for the elderly themselves, but family members as well.
Cindy, Shannon, thank you both very much for the presentation today. We do have a proclamation which goes along with this. We didn't read it today because we really wanted to give you guys the time to talk about what you actually do and how you can be helpful in preventing senior abuse and rectifying when it gets to the point of needing to go to the District Attorney's Office. Kudos to both of you for the work you're doing. I will ask my Board, I will need a motion, we are being asked to approve the proclamation. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this before we finish with this agenda item? All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move to our 9:30 timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item. This is the Greyhawk III subdivision. We are asked to take a number of actions here today. We will be conducting a public hearing to consider a recommendation from the Placer County Planning Commission to approve the Greyhawk III project, including the following actions. We'll be asked to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program prepared for the Greyhawk III project. We will be asked to adopt an ordinance to rezone Assessor's Parcel Number 048151088 from RSB 40 PD 2, residential single-family combining minimum building site of 40,000 square feet. Wow, that's a lot of text. Combining planned residential development of 2.0 units per acre to RSB 18 PD 2.8, residential single-family combining minimum building site of 18,000 square feet, combining planned residential development of 2.8 acres per acre. We are also being asked to approve the vesting tentative subdivision map to subdivide the 20.55-acre property into a development with open space and common area lots. And we are being asked to approve a conditional use permit and conditions of approval to allow a multifamily development in the CPD DC zoning district on the western portion of the site and a planned residential development on the eastern portion. Christopher Schmitz presenting today.
Yes.
Chris, thank you. I probably just gave you your entire presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The project before you today for consideration is the proposed Greyhawk III subdivision. It's a 72-unit project in Granite Bay. Just to orientate you to the location, it's the northeast corner of Sierra College Boulevard and Eureka Road. It is bound by two, on two sides by the city of Roseville. On the south side of Eureka Road, there's a commercial development and residential neighborhoods along Hillsborough Drive. On the western side, there's some open space and multifamily apartments and commercial. This is the Safeway Plaza, I think it's Renaissance Creek. North of the site is a strap ravine that flows east to west through Granite Bay out to Dry Creek. Immediately north is Office Professional and the Greyhawk II project, which is currently under construction, a bunch of Office Professional and the Granite Bay Business Park, retail along Douglas. East of the site is the Greyhawk I subdivision, both here and here with an open space quarter. Greyhawk Drive is here. And I just want to point out Granite Bay High School is located down here. The parcel, the project site itself is made up of two parcels. I'll refer them to a western and an eastern parcel. The west parcel is zone, commercial planned development, design corridor. It's about nine acres. And the eastern parcel is 11 acres. It's zone residential, single-family, minimum building site of 40,000 square feet with a PD designation of two. They are requesting a rezone of just the eastern parcel of the project. Zoning nearby is a mix of residential, single-family, and the Greyhawk with a PD designation, Office Professional to the north, commercial planned development, same as on the western parcel at the corner of Douglas and Sierra College. A larger lot, single-family residential, one acre to 2.3 acre plus to the east, and another PD along Silverwood Court north of Granite Bay High School. Just a picture of the project site, this is from the south side of Eureka Road at the Commercial Plaza looking north. This one is at the edge of the project site, looking back towards Sierra College Boulevard. The entitlements, Supervisor Montgomery did a good job of going through everything, but they are seeking a rezone from RSB 40 PD 2 to RSB 18 PD 2.8. I'll note that this is the same zoning the B18 PD 2.8 as the Greyhawk II project adjacent to the site. Also, a vesting tentative subdivision map to split the 11.65 acres into a 28-unit planned residential development with open space and common area lots and the subdivision of the 8.9-acre western parcel into a 44-unit residential development consisting of half-plex units. Since it's a multifamily that's allowed in the CPD district, it does require a use permit and also all of our PDs require a use permit, so there's one use permit for the whole project. Just a general layout of the site, the half-plex units on the western portion are surrounded, it's a center block with the units arranged around it. The eastern portion is detached residential, 28 units. There is only one entrance along Eureka Road that aligns with Hillsborough Drive to the south. There is an emergency vehicle access entrance only on Sierra College Boulevard. A big open space preserve along Strap Ravine and an open space- space preserve along Strap Ravine, and an open space reserve in the center of the site, and a top lot that serves both portions in the eastern portion, northern edge. Two proposed housing types. The detached are the duplex homes share a common wall. They do have a private backyard. The cluster homes are fairly new to Placer County. It's the exact same product that's being built in Greyhawk II. Basically, you get a building envelope and a private use rear patio. Everything else is common area lot maintained by the HOA. The home sizes anticipated on the duplexes are 2,100 square feet to approximately 2,600 square feet, and the detached units 2590 square feet up to 3,350 square feet. This is the Greyhawk II project, so the development on the eastern portion will be very similar to the layout you see here. Open space, the proposal includes 7.3 acres of open space or 40% of the project site. Tree impacts, there's considerable grading being proposed for the site, so there is tree loss. 3.7 acres of oak canopy will be mitigated for. There is a cluster of significant oaks in the center of the project that will be saved, and all the trees that are in this riparian zone will also be untouched. Parks and trails, the community plan and the Dry Creek Greenway Plan call for a public trail on the south side of Strap Ravine. The applicant will be constructing this trail here. There's an existing stub at the Greyhawk subdivision. It will follow the south side of Strap Ravine and then dip into the site to connect to Eureka Road, so this will be publicly accessible. They'll also be constructing a multipurpose trail on the north side of Eureka Road that currently dead ends at the Greyhawk project site. There'll also be a series in red here, you'll see sidewalks internal to the project, a series of pathways on the eastern portion and sidewalks that exist along Sierra College Boulevard that allow people to walk up to the services and retail located to the north. The community plan has fairly strict language about gating and subdivisions. This project does qualify for gates because it's on a major arterial, Sierra College Boulevard. Since traffic is always an issue on Sierra College and there is an alternative access point, that gated entryway has been shifted to Eureka Road. It'll align with Hillsborough Drive to the south. And this image on the bottom is just a monument that will be located, will be built on the corner of Eureka and Sierra College Boulevard to identify the neighborhood. Parking is provided in a series of parking bays scattered throughout the site. You'll see those in purple. On-street parking in green on the western portion only. These are private roads in nero, so they do have to provide these parking bays, plus the parking in the sidewalks. Our zoning ordinance requires four units, or four spaces of parking for the eastern portion. The applicant is providing 102 spaces, and staff and the applicant believe that this is adequate, so they're 10 spaces short, but there's more parking provided than in the Greyhawk II project to the north. And the PD regulations do allow for us to deviate in the findings, so we can allow for less parking that's normally required. One of the big issues that brought up by the public and the MAC was the issue of aesthetics. The developer or the applicant parson properties is not a builder, so their builder hasn't been secured yet. So the public in the MAC thought, "How are we approving a project that we don't know what it looks like?" So in order to ensure consistency with the community plan, the western portion of the project is a design corridor, so we'd have to come in for design review. The applicant has agreed that the whole project, when a builder is secured, will come in for design review. And one thing we did in the environmental document is require, we call them enhanced facades on the, any facade visible from Eureka Road or Sierra College Boulevard. And what we'll look for is a combination of offsets, varied sheathing material. It could be things such as shutters, balconies, something so to provide visual interest along those roads, because this is a fairly high, fairly highly visible corner. This blue outlines show these facades that would require the enhancements if they're visible. They'll be visible if they're two stories. There is a sound wall proposed along Eureka Road here and Sierra College Boulevard on the west. This would be a wooden wall or wooden fence on the eastern portion, so any facades visible would require to have the enhanced facades. The applicant has also agreed to limit the height. The CPD does allow up to 50 feet in height on the western portion. They've agreed to a maximum of 36 feet in height that is consistent with our multifamily residential zoning district. There was a traffic study conducted for the project. It's, the project is expected to generate 520 daily trips, with 40 trips occurring in the AM peak hour and 51 trips in the PM peak hour. Traffic study also analyzed nearby intersections, and the project does not result in any analyzed intersections operating at a level of service which exceeds the minimum county standards in the AM or peak hours. Looking at nearby intersections, pavilions, driveway to the south, and Hillsborough Drive intersection at the project entrance, they do not meet a level that would satisfy a traffic signal. However, with cumulative in the existing traffic on Eureka Road, the intersection Eureka Road and Greyhawk Drive intersection does exceed the requirements of peak hour warrants in the morning when traffic is heading to the Granite Bay High School. But since this increment is only 1.5 seconds, it's below the 2.5 second threshold that would qualify as being significant impact. The project was presented to the Granite Bay MAC in January as an informational item and then an action item on April 6th. The MAC voted 6-0 to recommend denial of the project, and their biggest issues were compliance with the community plan development regulations. They acknowledge that does meet the PD requirements, but they argued it didn't meet the spirit and intent of PD, the PD rules as far as open space and layout. The uncertainty about the design and architecture of the project structures, which I touched on and didn't like, that there was only one entrance on Eureka Road with the current traffic congestion. The project went before the Planning Commission on April 28th, and they voted 4-0 to recommend approval, and three members were absent. So with that, staff recommends you hold a public hearing. I won't read through all these, but adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the project. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the eastern portion of the site. Approve a tentative vesting subdivision map to allow the multifamily duplex units on the western portion and the 28-unit detached housing units on the eastern portion, and approve a conditional use permit to do the same, based on the findings contained in the staff report. And staff is here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. We're going to first start with any questions that the board might have, and then we will open it up for public comments. Any board questions? Supervisor Yular.
Chris, a couple of questions. So viewing it kind of as two projects, even though it's one, starting with the western side, you made a comment about the size of the product that is being proposed, and I think you said it was somewhere in the 2,000 square foot range. That's 2,000 square feet per side, correct? So it's, since the, the external view would be that of approximately a 4,000 square foot home?
Correct.
Kind of a, kind of a view, okay. The zoning designation on the property today, under the community plan, that was, the land use for this, which was adopted in 1989, allows for what's being proposed, correct?
Correct. It's zone commercial plan development with a use permit. We do allow multifamily residential.
Okay.
Up to 10 units an acre. In the project itself, on the duplex site is about five units per acre, so about half the density that would be permitted in the district with a use permit.
Okay. So no, no change, no nothing from the community plan on the left side?
Correct.
On the west side. On the east side, they are requesting a rezone. You've identified the project to the north, the Greyhawk II project, and this is consistent with that.
Same zoning.
I'm sorry?
It's the same zoning as the Greyhawk II project.
Same zoning, okay. The project to the east, Greyhawk I, is larger lots.
Correct.
When you're talking about a commercial zone district, is it common to see some kind of a transition from larger lot to a smaller lot like this?
Yeah, it's just good planning. A medium density type project is a nice buffer between a larger detached single-family and a commercial or office project.
Okay. And then to the south, the Hillsborough subdivision, this, we're looking at 2.8 units the acre, is that correct?
About 2.4 units an acre in the Hillsborough subdivision, which is a city of Roseville neighborhood.
Okay. It's what, what?
2.4 units per acre.
On the, on the south?
On the south.
Then the traffic, that was a subject of conversation at the MAC. The traffic associated with this as a commercial site versus as a residential site. What are the overall traffic implications of not building commercial but building the residential instead?
With the traffic, they have numbers associated with different land use types. There's actually less traffic with a multifamily residential development than a commercial plaza, like a store or even an office professional building. So the traffic study determined that this project would be, generate less traffic than if it was developed on the western portion as commercial.
Think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for meeting with me last week on this project. I just have a question about the Sierra College access, or, help me understand why it's not a good idea to allow a right turn in and a right turn out.
The county and the city have an understanding that Sierra College Boulevard is a major arterial and traffic moves very quickly. It's wide. The objective is to get cars through or down Sierra College Boulevard as quickly and efficiently as possible. So if there's an alternative entry into Sierra College Boulevard, in this case Eureka Road, that an entrance should be on a side street and not on Sierra College Boulevard. And that's why staff did not support another entrance for residents of this subdivision on Sierra College Boulevard. Also, right in, right out would require tapers, and there is a bridge crossing for Strap Ravine just north of the site, and it would be an expensive proposition, plus there would be a wetland impact to expand Sierra College to provide that taper length that the county standards require. So it was decided that Eureka Road would be the entrance for the project.
So you, by, you mean tapered, it would be tapered as the, if they come out on the...
Deceleration and acceleration.
Yeah, right. I was just curious, I was down there yesterday, and I can see that there's a median there, so there's no way you can make a left turn out or a left turn in. So anyhow, thank you, that satisfies my question. Thank you.
Chris, I have one clarifying, or actually two clarifying questions, I think, before we open it up to the public. The first is, there are two things shown on your drawing there that are sort of a light green. One along, yeah, that, and then over to the left. What are those?
This is a stormwater management detention facility.
Okay.
And there's a small one here, and this is where the stormwater gets piped over across the street into the Rose, city of Roseville, open space area, and then eventually heads north into Strap Ravine. So I think this lower portion of the site gets drained to the west. Most of this here drains north into Strap Ravine.
Okay. And then my second question is, given that there's only one entrance in and out of this, are there emergency vehicle access locations in case of emergency?
This, right here at the north end of the project site is EVA.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to hear from the applicant, and then we will open it up to public comments.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. In lieu of my client and our engineers, everything getting up, if I could have a little bit more time than the typical three minutes to review with you some of the issues that have been raised on the project. We are, on behalf of Patterson Properties, the owner and applicant of the project, pleased to be before you with not only the recommendation of your staff, the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission, but here with a project with no insignificant environmental effects. Staff's done a very good presentation, not only as part of the staff report, but today with this PowerPoint to talk about the project itself. I did want to have a couple of clarifying comments. The density on the eastern portion, the single-family, is 2.4 units per acre. Across the street, to give you an idea relative to Supervisor Yular's comment about sort of density increasing as you get closer to the roadway in Hillsborough, which is in the city of Roseville, across the street to the south, the density there is 3.2 units the acre. So we're less dense on the eastern parcel than the Hillsborough subdivision is to the south. We're at four point, a little over 4.9 units per acre on the half-plex units. Again, staff covered the parking. The idea on the eastern parcel was to have narrower streets. Those mirror what's in Greyhawk II, but looking at water quality effects, you like to have less impervious surface. And so the idea was to have narrower streets in the eastern portion, no parking on those streets, so that you could address water quality impacts with the ever-increasing state regulation relative to water quality and the MS4 permit. You have to look at being somewhat creative on projects as they come forward, and not only in your water quality basins, as the chairman asked on the two basins, but also in terms of your project layout and design, but provide for parking in those off-site bays. Relative to traffic, I did want to note with some greater detail, if you just look at the western parcel, the commercial parcel that we're seeking the half-plex units on, if you compare that to traffic that would have been generated by a commercial project on that same parcel, the half-plex units generate 30% fewer daily trips, 83% fewer morning peak hour trips, and 79% fewer afternoon rush hour trips. So there's a tremendous reduction in traffic from those half-plex units. I'm not going to get into some of the detail relative to the traffic report, because I think there, the staff report has done a very good job of that. There was one comment made at Planning Commission that I did want to raise. A resident said that we had used the wrong trip rate from the International Transportation Engineers' trip rate for the project, and we should have used what was in Greyhawk II for single-family. And in fact, looking at the traffic study for the portion of the project that is identical to Greyhawk II, on the eastern parcel, we used the same trip rate, single-family trip rate. To the, on the western parcel, we use the condo townhouse trip rate, which is called for, not only for the product type that's being proposed, but also from what's out there in terms of another project in Granite Bay called the Villas at Tree Lake, which is at higher density at eight units the acre, but the same type of product, attached product, where you're, what you're finding is empty nesters and a lot of single adults, older adults in those units. So the use of that trip rate is that, supported by evidence, not only in the record, but just in practical matters of what we're seeing in this marketplace. Looking at that project, the Villas at Tree Lake, again, when those, the demand for those type of units, they rarely come available for sale or otherwise. When they do, they're snapped up immediately. There's 48 units there. Again, a majority of those units are owned by single older adults, and there is definitely a demand in the marketplace for those. Those were developed at eight units the acre. Now, we understand we don't have designs of the project, but to give you an idea of what's being built in the region at this density with what are called half-plex units, very different from when, at least when I grew up, and what you thought of half-plex units. What we're seeing in places like Eldorado Hills being developed, and the builder there is one of the builders that's been looking at this site relative to possibly doing a project here, is an example of what you'd see where from the street, they look like two separate single-family homes. There's not a common wall typically running all the length of the, of the two units. There's usually just a wing wall and a slight connection. So these are just an example of the types of units.
And Mr. Laduka, you've got just another couple of minutes, if you could work toward a summation.
You bet. In terms of home design, I've, looking at projects that I've represented in Granite Bay over the last 27 years, I've handled 12 residential subdivisions. Not a single one had home designs at the tentative map stage. As staff mentioned, we're subject to not only the design guidelines of the community plan, but those specific conditions, conditions five and six, covering homes that are visible from the street on both Sierra College and Eureka Road. There was a comment made at Planning Commission relative to the gate, that cars would be backing up on the Eureka Road. Granite Bay Community Plan requires pedestrian gates to be opened from dawn to dusk. Not only will our pedestrian gate be open from dawn to... Not only will our pedestrian gate be opened from dawn to dusk, but also our vehicle gate, unlike in Hillsborough where all the gates are closed during the day. On the one point of access, to supplement what staff mentioned, at this location, you're not only at a high-speed roadway, you have a traffic signal that's the downhill portion of the hill coming north on Sierra College Boulevard. So, you have cars picking up speed, you have an axel lane, you have a right-hand turn lane already moving on to the Sierra College Boulevard. So, the, in order to be able to have cars get off, at the same time, cars are merging and cars going 60 or 70 miles an hour down that hill is the reason why both staff and the applicant agreed it would not be, make sense to have a full access point there. Also, the culvert would have to be expanded, you would have fill in the 100-year floodplain, and you would definitely have impacts to waters of the United States. The last comment I have is really relative to the commercial component, there were comments made at the MAC that we needed to, people wanted to see a commercial project despite the fact that we have much less traffic than a commercial project would generate. My client, Steve Patterson, is a longtime commercial builder, owner, and developer in South Placer and throughout the Sacramento area. He bought this many years ago to do a commercial project. There has been no commercial interest in the site. He even went so far as to front-load the expansion of Eureka Road to the tune of over a million and a half dollars. That's a roadway that's in the community plan. He did the community plan's work relative to that roadway, and still no commercial interest. He now was left to a, a, a point where no commercial tenants wanted to come, he's a commercial builder, what does he do? So, he looked to see what he could do on the site that'd have less impact on the community, especially in traffic generation. He couldn't come in with a higher generation project. So, looking at the project, he decided to come forward.
And if, if you could wrap up, that would be great.
Absolutely. Looking at vacancy rates, you might hear from that today. We had CB Richard Ellis do an analysis of retail in Granite Bay. They, that analysis came in the end of last week. They are the, you know, one of the leading commercial brokers in the area. What they found is if you take out the three anchors that are in, in Granite Bay, which is CVS, or Walmart Neighborhood Market, and Rayleigh's, the vacancy rate for shop space, just the shop space, not those three anchors, is 22.8%. There's vacancies up at the CVS center, the vacancy rate for shop space at the CVS center, one signal away, is 45%. So, my client decided to come forward with a residential project that he thought would have some, you know, slightly higher density, but still blend in and do that transition from what's identical to Greyhawk Two, and then move to the half plex units to provide a different housing type in Granite Bay.
Okay.
With that, we'd ask you to support what the planning commission acted on in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for the project proponent before we open it to the public? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Going to open this hearing to the public, please step forward if you would like to address this item, identify yourself, and you will be given time to make your comments in front of the board.
Supervisors, thank you for your time. My name is Shannon Quinn, I live in Hillsborough North, just south of the proposed project. As it relates to the Greyhawk Three project, it is my contention that the SEQA process was violated by requiring an MND over an EIR. Section nine, Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, which ask whether a project will have significant environmental impacts, including conflict with any applicable land use plan, policy, or regulation adopted for the purpose of avoiding or mitigating an environmental effect. In a court case brought by the Pocket Protectors versus the City of Sacramento, the neighbors brought forth substantial evidence that mandated preparation of an EIR. It was determined that since this, the objectives of the PD included providing adequate light, pure air, minimizing pedestrian and automobile traffic, the PD qualified. The court said that the Pocket Protectors abundant testimony provided evidence of significant environmental impact. Relevant persons' observations by area residents are properly considered for this purpose. Additionally, it said that the council's approval of the project did not discuss any opposing evidence, and instead it merely recited generally that substantial evidence of a significant effect on the environment does not exist. The court found this unacceptable. And the project conflicted with the PD established by the city to mitigate the court's, the possible environmental effect of uncontrolled development and had the potential to cause an immediate adverse environmental impact to hundreds of nearby residents. It is the county's contention that this project is consistent with the general land uses and programs as specified in the Placer County General Plan and the Granite Bay Community Plan, but it should be noted that it is impossible to be consistent with the community plan if it requires a community plan amendment to land use and zoning designations. All elements of the community plan, transportation, recreation, et cetera, are based on the land use and zoning designations contained in the plan, and any of the other elements apply if the land use and zoning designations are changed. In addition, the Granite Bay Community Plan says that PDs should be utilized to provide significant natural resources, natural beauty, or open space without increasing the intensity of development otherwise possible. Like the Pocket Protectors case, abundant testimony provided by Granite Bay community residents provided evidence of significant environmental impact and must be properly considered in the case of the Greyhawk Three project. Not only has this been expressed in both verbal and written format, it was also cited as a reason for complete denial by the Granite Bay MAC in their 6-0 rejection of this project. Second, the court in the same case looked at section one, Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, which reviews the aesthetic impacts of the proposed project on the surrounding area. As on other SEQA topics, the opinions of area residents, if based on direct observation, may be relevant as to the aesthetic impact and may constitute substantial evidence in support of a fair argument. No other special expertise is required on this topic. Can I go on?
Please.
The court found, to the extent that the city council may have found this evidence insubstantial, it abused its discretion when they tried to weigh in with contrary evidence. There is no counterbalance to this argument. If there is substantial evidence, it mandates an EIR. I have made this fair argument, both to the planning commission, as well as in writing to county staff. So, the lesson to take from this case, which is also applicable to the Greyhawk Three project, is that a proposed project's conflict with an established, established land use plan or PD may give rise to a fair argument of significant environmental impact and require preparation of an EIR. Evidence can be found simply through testimony of potentially affected neighbors. Similarly, the neighbors' aesthetic concerns can give rise to a fair argument and trigger EIR preparation. The fair argument standard is a low threshold, in situations like this where vocal community groups band together to oppose projects, that threshold may be easily reached and an EIR, an EIR may be required. This may be the, the death knell to the successful defense of a negative declaration for a controversial project such as this. I urge you to either not take action on this project today until it has been reexamined to make sure it meets the SEQA guidelines as mandated by California law, or deny the approval, and then we would note, require no further review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
I'm Barbara Singletary, I'm the vice chairman of the Granite Bay MAC Board, and I'm here to represent the MAC Board in our concerns for this project and why we unanimously voted against it. The first thing was the increased density, and I, I understand the 10 units per acre on the west side, and it's going to be fewer as drawn to 6.58, but looking at the map and how it looks, that's 44 dwelling units, that's not 10 units, it's 44. Same on the other side. Again, it's maybe less per net acre, but looking at the map, it's significant, significantly more when you see the buildings laid out. There's also a significant and unavoidable impact, as stated before. Yes, the Eureka widening was done in anticipation or ahead of time preemptively. It changed the topography of that area significantly when they did that widening. And so, now looking at it and seeing it as is now, and this project coming up, we've forgotten what the riparian, what it looked like before with the rolling hills, with the wetlands and the riparian oaks and all of the, the foliage that was there before. I agree that it should be an EIR for this project, just to consider that impact from both of those things. Again, no consideration to the quality of the design, the PD does account for that in our MAC plan. It would be nice if a developer came to us, not only with a tentative map, but with their builder in place, giving an idea of what they're looking at doing. It makes it a little easier for us in the community to get a visual. At this point, it's just blocks on a map, that's squares. Hard to see what it's going to look like from the street. There's also concern about turnarounds for emergency vehicles. Understand that there's an emergency exit or entrance for vehicles on Sierra College, the one entrance on Eureka. The streets are pretty narrow, fire truck gets in there, are they going to have to drive all the way around to get back out if you have multiple emergency vehicles in the area for something? How easy are they going to be able to get to the designated emergency spot? How easy are they going to be able to get out? And how will residents maneuver around that particular emergency? Hillsborough and Greyhawk Two already have difficulties getting in and out of their neighborhoods during peak school times, and it's not just Granite Bay High, there's also Excelsior on Eureka that's maybe about a mile west, and you have traffic from these surrounding areas going to that elementary school as well. So, it, it needs to be considered, there, there is a significant traffic impact that will affect people. That is all I have to say, and I appreciate you taking the time and the understanding.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Please come forward.
Joanne Jackson, Hillsborough North. I've lived there for 18 years, and I live on a third of an acre, no matter what the PD whatever says. I would like to talk about the lack of respect that the developers, the planning commission, and our supervisor have for the Granite Bay Community Plan. I know I resent other residents that cannot make it here today. We am being bombarded with an onslaught of projects for our area of high-density housing, request for rezones, general plan amendments, five memory care facilities in a five-mile radius, and Greyhawk Three is just the first. To build Greyhawk Three, hundreds of trees are being demolished and beautiful topography is being regraded, all to fit in a project that really shouldn't be there. To accommodate residential on a commercial lot, a six-to-12-foot-high masonry sound wall will be constructed along Sierra College Boulevard and Eureka Road up to Hillsborough Drive to block the sound of roaring traffic to the residents, and that wall will be the unwelcoming sight to greet anyone entering Granite Bay. The Granite Bay Community Plan does not allow for any more gated communities, yet this project's calls for a single gated entrance and exit for 70-plus homes to funnel all the traffic on an already congested Eureka Road. How the conclusion that this will not impact traffic or the environment is beyond our understanding. Patterson Properties has not once contacted the neighbors to talk about the impact the development might have on us and how we might have made some changes to make it workable for all. And after he heard all the residents' objections and suggestions and was ultimately denied by the MAC, he made no changes to his proposal to this board because of his arrogance. The planning commission ignored the MAC's denying this project with the premise that it could be affordable housing, when it is impossible to know that at this point, and with the cost of the land and the size of the homes, it's almost impossible to achieve. And the HOA fees to maintain the gate and private, add in the HOA fees to maintain the guide and private roads, I don't think this project can support affordable homes. Greyhawk Two is, I'm sorry, yes, Greyhawk Two is selling for the mid 700s to the low 800,000s. The members of the MAC are residents that live among us, and for the planning commission who sit in offices all day to think they know better is not the way it should work. There is a process for a reason. Developers are funding supervisors' campaigns to get their projects passed. Patterson Properties and their attorney not only contributed to the campaigns while the controversy was erupting, they in essence gave the county over a million dollars by paying for the widening of Eureka Road themselves to expedite the passing of their project. In this district, you can pay to play. You can also lie, as they did, by telling us the developer bought this property 27 years ago, when reality, they bought it in 2005, and saying they weren't planning commercial property on the corner because it cannot sustain here. When we checked with our commercial realtors, it was very low, and by the way, CVS is not in Granite Bay, it's in the city of Roseville. We are not against growth, we are against growth that only benefits developers and does nothing to enhance the lives of current residences or fit in with the community plan. I hope the board does not band together to pass a project in another supervisor's district, just so then in the future, our supervisor will return the favor, especially when today is election day and you might have different supervisors to work with in the future. I hope that the supervisors know this is a bad, one, with that.
Okay, and, and breathe, we don't want you passing out at the podium.
Okay, no, I'm from New York, I always talk like this. I hope that the supervisors know this is a bad product and it's, project in its current form and could set the precedent for dozens of similar projects coming to our district. We need to send a message to respect the plan and the residents who live here. I hope each of you will vote with your conscience, not for, not just for the allegiance to a fellow supervisor who doesn't even own property in the district. Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment on this? And if there's more than anyone, if you wouldn't mind making a line, and that would just move things a little more quickly through the process.
My name is Oliver Petuskin, I actually live in Newcastle, so I'm just looking at this, and I think I would be fighting this also. It just sounds like it's not really well-planned out, and I had actually an observation on the question. When the county, it sounds like there's a lot of projects down in the Granite Bay area, and I know there are projects all over Roseville, you know, wherever. Does the county ever require on projects like that, that they have solar? Instead, you know, that they have to have, it's as a requirement, that all the houses have to be heated by, and cooled by solar energy?
I would defer to our planning staff to answer that question.
I haven't seen it as a condition of approval, but a lot of the enlightened developers will do it on their own.
Well, can the county enlighten developers?
We, yeah. Yeah, there, there are, the building code is getting stricter and stricter, and we're moving towards zero.
I mean, I just look at this, and most of that picture is rooftops. I bet 50% of that is rooftops, and it just seems that at this day and age, that, you know, a development like this, a requirement should be solar. And I'm hoping you guys pursue that with a vengeance, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Good morning, my name is Larissa Berry, and I live in Granite Bay. And before I get into my statement, I just had two comments, since traffic is near and dear to my heart. My assumption is that if a commercial project was put on the western portion of parcel as it's designated, that that traffic would let out onto Sierra College and not onto Eureka? Is that? Could I ask Mr. Laduka? No? Oh, okay. And number two, with the argument that the gate on Eureka is similar to the gates on Hillsborough, I think that I can safely say, and I think you would safely agree, that traffic volumes and speeds are significantly different on Eureka than they are on Hillsborough. And now, this will not flow smoothly, I had a former planning commissioner help me draft the statement so that I could have as high a density impact as I could during my time up here. So, as currently proposed, the Greyhawk Three project will cause significant cumulative environmental impacts that have not been adequately mitigated to a less-than-significant level. As such, impacted residents and concerned residents of Granite Bay request the following. One, we ask that you not certify the mitigated negative declaration as adequate for review of this project as proposed, but rather require a full EIR. Two, we ask that you instruct the developer to redesign the project so that the significant cumulative environmental impacts that have been identified by our community comments on this project are actually mitigated to a less-than-significant level. This project is wrong in so many ways, and with so much negative feedback from impacted residents, approval in its current form is an affront to our community plan, shows lack of respect to our MAC, which unanimously rejected the proposal because of our community concerns, and it's an affront to those directly impacted by the incomplete and misleading information provided by the developer. And I'd also like to publicly thank Suzanne Jones for taking a busy day, election day, to come here and represent us, represent our MAC, and represent our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors.
Well, it's still morning.
Morning.
We aren't quite there yet.
I wish it was.
It may feel like it, but it's still morning.
I'm Suzanne Jones, and I'm a Granite Bay resident, and I'm also the immediate past president of the Granite Bay MAC. I was appointed to the MAC by this board, presumably to represent the members and residents of the Granite Bay community. You have also been elected by the constituents of Placer County to act in the best interests. This development was discussed at great length at the Granite Bay MAC meeting on April 6th, and was voted six to zero unanimously to recommend denial based on a multitude of concerns. I went to the planning commission. I went to the planning commission, planning commission meeting, and pleaded with the commission to not discount the hours that were spent by the MAC, by the community members, not only at our meeting, but also the hours and time spent on updating the community And also to honor our decision to recommend denying this subdivision. Ultimately, that's exactly what they did. Only four commissioners out of six took it upon themselves to rationalize why my community needed this kind of development. They did not address our concerns other than to discount them as insignificant. I come before you now to plead with you, as our representatives, to listen to this community and not let our voices be drowned out by the money, power, and influence of non-resident developers. Although you say the community plan allows for this type of development, does not mean that you should vote against the community and shove high-density development down our throats, ultimately destroying the quality of our premier community. Please do not let the opinion of only four planning commissioners outweigh the voices of the MAC and the members of the Granite Bay community. Thank you very much for your time today.
Good morning, Michael.
Michael Garabedian, here for Friends of the North Fork. Three general questions. They're generic, I believe, and a couple of comments here. One is also generic. We're concerned about the correspondence not being linked to on the agenda of the Board of Supervisors. I don't know if that's a new practice, but we hope that would not happen in the future, especially on important projects.
We do have copies of all the correspondence here at the board.
I know, but it's quite different than being able to access it. The agenda comes out the last possible minute on Friday. There's one workday in between then and now. It's not fair, really. Just not fair.
I believe the agenda came out Wednesday night.
Thank you. It's still pretty short, but we hope it would be on the agenda as a record there for people to access easily, instead of having to go to look at the file. We'd like to know who was on the development committee. We hope we would disclose today who was on the development committee, the staff who make decisions and make recommendations to you. We're not saying, and we think those meetings should be open to the public, not that the public should participate, but at least be able to observe. Now, the one interest is an issue, of course. The Cal Poly is doing a detailed study of one-entrance subdivisions and made an initial report to the Board of Forestry on that. And we think those kind of factors and the kind of protocol they're trying to develop to deal with that is very important. And finally, the thing that is not being said here that I think should be evident, is evident to everyone at all, this proposal, this proposes to add to the development rights, add to the property rights for the applicant at the expense of the property rights of the people who live there and live in that area. Someone's property right to do what they want with their property ends where it affects the neighboring property right, the existing property right. That should be the planning commission to understand that and deal with that. By and large, it doesn't look like they've done that here. So let's be clear about it. We're talking about reducing and impacting the property rights of these people if you approve this. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brady Nations. I'm a resident of the affected community. With your approval of this project, you're going to accomplish a lot of things. One would be to let it go forward. That's a very minor component. Second would be to state that we have no representation in this board. You've heard over and over again that there is opposition. I'm sorry I couldn't attend the planning commission meeting, but I do read in the documents that two people spoke in favor of it. 10 people spoke against it. No one is here today speaking in favor of the project other than the developer himself. At the Granite Bay MAC meetings, which I did attend, there was discussion, to be polite, but it was a strong statement of opposition. No one besides the developer spoke up there. The community has said, "We don't want this project." And for you to approve it says, "We don't care about you, community." Second thing you're going to do is say to the Granite Bay MAC and all the other MACs in this county is that your efforts are fruitless. A lot of people spend a lot of time in these meetings, getting their ideas together, discussing, yes, expressing their opinions, their recommendations, their desires were brought to the planning commission through the MAC board or the MAC council, six to nothing. And the planning commission turned around, and as other people have said, stuffed it down their throat. So your vote in favor of this project says, "We don't care about you, citizens." Go ahead, build whatever you want to, developers. You come from where you want. We'll get it through somehow. I've been through all the planning documents. There's a lot of sweeping under the rug, the most significant one that Barbara mentioned. We are against the increased rezoning, or the density, the rezoning for increased density. And there's a whole bunch of other issues that have been talked about over and over again. Your approval says, "We don't need to listen to the citizens. We'll build what we want to." Thank you very much.
If you would hold your applause, please, until we get through the public hearing, that would be great, and then you can applaud to your heart's content. But just let's get through the hearing first, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's David Harris. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I didn't dress for this, but I live in Granite Bay.
Excellent shirt, though, by the way.
Thank you, yeah. So I live in Tree Lake Village, and the reason why I'm up here is I keep hearing this project compared to the Villas. I actually face the Villas in Granite Bay, and the Villas are extremely successful because they're dead center, right in the middle of 750 to 1,000 semi-custom and custom houses. So naturally, people want to live there. The other thing is, the Villas is surrounded by 3/4 wrought iron fence, six foot high at the max, that you can look right into the backyards. It doesn't have a prison wall like this is proposed on Sierra College. And number third, number third on my concern is if you go by the Villas, on the north end, there's Village Center Commercial Strip, and at any given time, there's at least 25 to 30 cars that the people in the Villas actually utilize this parking lot because there's not enough room to park in the Villas. Go by after 5 o'clock, and there's at least 100 cars parked in this commercial strip because the cars don't all fit in the Villas. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Harris, and I've lived in Granite Bay since 1977. MAC denied this project because it doesn't meet the planned development guidelines. The purpose and intent of a PD is conservation of visual and aesthetic resources and maintaining an area's existing quality of life. The original application submitted in 2008 proposed commercial to the west end with access from Sierra College Boulevard and 13 homes on the eastern parcel with an access from Wood Grove Way, which runs to the east down to Eureka Road, starts at Douglas and comes all the way down. Quite a bit of traffic comes down that road for people who live in that area that want to access Granite Bay High School. The current project changed commercial to 44 duplexes, which is allowed in commercial zoning, and 13 homes to 28, with only one access for the entire project at Eureka Road. This creates conflicts with the traffic accessing Eureka Road from Wood Grove Way, which I mentioned, which is just east, and the Hillsborough Development, which is directly across the street from this gate. And all that traffic's moving onto fast-moving Eureka Road, and the traffic coming out of Hillsborough has to get across all those lanes of traffic if they want to turn right and go up Sierra College. A 10-foot-high wall will front on Sierra College as a noise buffer for the two-story duplexes. The Brownie Line for the city of Roseville and Granite Bay zigzags back and forth along Sierra College Boulevard. Roseville has developed a traffic, commercial, and residential projects on Sierra College by incorporating setbacks, existing trees, landscaping, and unintrusive masonry walls at reasonable heights. And directly across from this development, you may have noticed on the first slide that they showed, there's duplexes and the Safeway Center there, but you don't even see those homes. There's a wetlands there. Piecemeal zoning isn't good planning, and it isn't county's job to ensure that projects pencil out at the expense of residents in the community who bought into the plan. Our community is being inundated with projects seeking general plan amendments for much higher density rezoning and use changes despite overwhelming support. Do not change the land use during the recent community plan update. Section 1754080 of the zoning ordinance states, "It is not the purpose of a PD to confer special privileges to any landowner, provide a means to protect an investment, or compensate a landowner for areas of their property that are unbuildable under standard development policies and procedures due to existing features and/or constraints on the property." The PD designation is an overused tool to gain large-density bonuses while glossing over poorly-designed projects. PDs are to preserve natural resources, provide varying lot sizes, which we don't see on this plan at all, and to maintain land use compatibility. This project will cut 90%, 550 of the trees, grade 75% of the property. It is unimaginative, doesn't fit the PD definition. This property could and should be developed with a much better project. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Are there any others in the audience who are going to want to speak on this after this lady? Okay, we will close the public hearing after this speaker, and we will bring it back to the board.
I wasn't going to speak, but I think I want to. My name is Sherri Musgrove, and I'm a 40-year resident of Granite Bay. I was on the Granite Bay Community Association when we drafted the initial community plan back in the late '80s, and I was a member of the planning commission from 1989 to 92. So I think I have a pretty good idea of what the community plan is and what our intent was when we drafted it and what it was when it was updated just recently. I think it's clear that this project does not fit the goals and policies of the community plan. I think you've heard that over and over from residents of this community today, and I would add my voice to this. It doesn't fit our intention for this community. You've heard from the developer, he's indicated why he feels it does fit, but I think that the comments of the residents demonstrate that we are not convinced that the potential for significant cumulative impacts from this project have been adequately mitigated at this time by the project that is proposed and before you today. And I think that as long as there are this many people who are coming to you and saying that these impacts still exist in this project, it is only fair to us that you at least require an environmental impact report and do not certify an EGDEC here today, and send this project back to be redesigned to something that better fits the goals and policies of this community and all the specifics that you've heard about traffic impacts, impacts on parks, impacts on recreation, hydrology, schools, and I could go on and on. But I think the residents of this community have done a good job already of raising those issues in other forums. So I just hope you will hear us today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else that wants to speak under public comment on this item, I'm going-
Manager, would you like to address any of the issues that were raised?
Why don't you wait a minute, and we'll see if anyone on the board has any questions that they would like you to address. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any members of the board have any questions or concerns that they've heard raised during public hearing that they would like addressed? Supervisor Yular.
Yeah, a few questions. Both pieces have the zoning that was assigned to them in 1989 plan, correct? In the 1989 plan, in order to adopt that plan, an EIR was done, right? And the EIR, I'm assuming, in order for the EIR to remain valid all these years, it must have assumed the development of the parcel at its highest intense use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm assuming that EIR anticipated a commercial project on this corner.
Based on the zoning, that's correct.
Everything that we have heard, from traffic to air quality to everything else, including what will be preserved of the corridor and the oak woodland area, and I would remind folks that in 1989, we didn't have a tree ordinance. We didn't have any kinds of the protections that we have today for the oak woodland areas. Those are all lesser impacts under this project than what would have been analyzed with that as a commercial site. Is that the reason for staff's negative declaration on this project?
As far as the habitat laws?
Habitat, air quality, traffic, what was analyzed, assuming a commercial project versus what's being proposed.
Everything that was analyzed was, in staff's opinion, adequately mitigated through our standard mitigations and also mitigation specific to this project.
Okay. To the issue of total number of units. The Granite Bay Community Plan adopted in 1989 allows for multifamily on commercial parcels, correct?
Correct. Up to 10 units per acre.
Up to 10 units per acre. And this front piece is how many acres?
Five point, roughly five acres.
On the-
Actually, 8.9 acres.
That's what I thought. I thought it was larger than that. So conceivably somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 units would be allowed under the 1989 community plan that was adopted.
Correct.
Okay. On the parcel to the east, where they're proposing a rezone, under current zoning, it would be, what, 14 units?
14. It's kept based on one and a half times the base zoning. So 14 units would be allowed under current zoning.
Okay. And they're requesting 21?
28.
20, I'm sorry?
28.
28, okay, thank you. So they're requesting 14 more there and proposing as many as 40 fewer on the front part than what would be allowed under the current plan.
Correct.
I believe cumulative negative impacts have been addressed. I believe the county council would have advised us otherwise if county council thought a negative declaration was deficient. A statement was made that the Granite Bay Community Plan does not allow gated communities. Is that your understanding of the Granite Bay Community Plan?
No. In the recent update, we tightened the rules on where gates were allowed, one of those being it's accessed off of Major Arterio, which is Sierra College Boulevard, Douglas Boulevard, or Auburn-Pulson Road south of Douglas, so along those three roads. And there's a couple of other instances where we would allow gates, and that's outlined in the community plan.
Okay. And then a statement was made about a non-resident developers. My recollection is you, if you don't still, you did live in Granite Bay, Mr. Patterson, when you-
Been there 23 years.
Yeah, you're still in Granite Bay. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I was a little confused by that as well. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Manager. I just wanted to address the cumulative traffic impacts. On page 10 of our staff report says that Greyhawk 3 will contribute its fair share to the cost of regional improvements by paying the fees in place when building permits are obtained. This reduces the proposed project's impacts associated with increases in traffic to a less-than-significant level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, no one's talked about the drainage, but it looks like through this project, there's some significant improvements to the drainage. Is there someone here that can help me with that?
I believe the project engineer is here to answer any questions on drainage.
Can you address the drainage issue, it looks like?
Supervisor Holmes, Greg Bardini with Morton and Metallow Engineering. Yeah, majority of the drainage improvements were constructed with the road widening.
Okay.
And so in Eureka Boulevard, there is a 66-inch and a 72-inch pipe that conveys the 100-year flows from off-site and conveys it to the culvert on Sierra College Boulevard. With the project itself, there's a water quality basin, an additional onsite drainage improvements, but again, the majority of those were done with the offsite work.
And so it's, the drainage has actually improved since, with this project?
Correct. And so provisions have been in place to convey the entire 100-year flow off-site around the project and in the, in those large diameter pipes.
All right, great. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Holmes. You asked a couple of questions that I was going to ask myself. Couple of things. You know, when I first got on the board here, I had a certain opinion about how development was, development decisions were made, and over the last six years, I've come to understand that a lot of thought goes into them. It's not something where, like Mr. Garabedian is inferring, where we get into a room and deals are made and cigars are smoked and that kind of thing. It's a very deliberate exercise, and it's not a precise exercise. There's a lot of give and take. In my district, we had a similar situation where the MAC was very concerned about the implementation of a density, a project that had a smaller density, but there are a lot of things that go into the mix to where you come out, you know, with this formula here, and it's applied. You know, every one of our supervisors come into these decisions on their own and independent of each other. Number one, that's the right way to do it, and number two, a lot requires very minimum contact. I can assure you that I have no fealty to any of the other supervisors with regards to what they do, and that's a fact. You could ask anybody. As a practicing attorney, I look at, I take Sequa very serious. I do have some concerns with the NEGDEC versus an EIR, but the county's been very successful in making decisions as far as in Sequa, and if our county council, you know, supports this moving forward as a, as a NEGDEC project, you know, or a NEGDEC decision, you know, I'm pretty confident that it'll survive whatever attack may or may not come down the road, as many of our other decisions have. I'm going to be supporting this project. I think it's some, a project that's needed, and I think it's a project that it has been very well thought of. I think the developer has made a commitment to do a lot of things with this piece of property that a lot of other folks would have laughed at and walked away. And, you know, when, in making these decisions for me, I don't normally go into the, you know, into the, I look at the project for what it is. I don't look at the person and what they've done, but in this particular instance, I have to, you know. And I never met Mr. Patterson before this particular project came up, but I was aware of the things that he's done while I was a board member with the Roseville Joint Union High School District, and the commitment that he's made to our children, and ironically, to the children of many of you folks that are sitting here from Granite Bay. Now, you can shake your head and, you know, and say that it's not true, but it's something that I do respect, and it's a bonus in addition, you know, to this project. So that's all I've got to say. You can disagree with it, but that's kind of, that's kind of what my thoughts are.
Thank you. My thoughts on this today are a little bit mixed and a little bit conflicted. I want to start with echoing Supervisor Duran and saying that, you know, whatever anyone may think my fealty does not lie with other supervisors. It lies with the data that I've read, the input that I've heard from communities, the development community and our own planning staff, and then frankly, making decisions based on all that input. Chris, can you remind me again, on the western parcel, under our existing zoning, how many units would be allowed in that half-plex configuration?
It's 10 units an acre or 88 units?
While I don't love this project in all its glory, what I do consider when I make decisions on these things is really what could go there if there were no zoning changes. And it appears that right now, we could put 88 units on the western piece and 14 with no zoning changes on the eastern piece, which would have significantly greater impacts, I think, on traffic in the area and other impacts that people have raised that they're concerned with today. So similar to Supervisor Duran, I am going to be supporting this project today. I think that the alternative to which these developers would be entitled with today's zoning and no changes is probably significantly worse for the community. I also have read the mitigated NEGDEC. I think it is a document that is sufficient and will withstand any challenge that may come forward. And the one question I do have is on the half-plexes, what is the, what is the range that those units are going to be selling for? Does anyone have any idea at this point, ballpark figures?
Just looking at what would be in the marketplace, probably looking at high fours, low fives to start for the smallest units.
Thank you. Those are my only other comments. Any questions or comments from the board? What's the pleasure of the board on this?
Madam Chair, I'd move approval of item 3A, items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
We have a motion, is there-
And I just want to confirm that included with the motion is the findings that are set out for each action on pages 8, 9, and 10 of the staff report.
So included.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. I do not believe this is a roll call. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We're going to move now to our 9:45 timed item. This is a Public Works and Facilities item. Again, this is a public hearing. We're going to be conducting a public hearing regarding county service area assessments and the fee report for fiscal year 2016-17.
Thank you Supervisor Montgomery and members of the board. Valerie Bain, Administrative Services Manager with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Today, I'm requesting your board conduct a public hearing to adopt a resolution to confirm the county service area annual assessment and fee report for fiscal year 2016-17 and authorize the collection of assessments on the 2016 county tax rule. By way of background, since 1983, the county has required that many new subdivisions form a county service area to fund the operation and maintenance of infrastructure improvements. The formation of each CSA and associated assessments was approved by the property owners at the time of development project. County departments administering these CSAs include the Office of Emergency Services and the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Services and facilities provided by CSAs include street lighting, road rehabilitation, drainage maintenance, snow removal, fire protection, and parks and landscape maintenance. Some CSAs include cost of living adjustments in accordance with the original voter-approved assessment, while others do not because no inflator was included at the time the CSA was formed. Only those CSAs with voter-approved inflators are adjusted. Pursuant to state law, your board shall conduct a public hearing and by resolution, confirm the annual report that details all CSA zones of benefit assessments to be placed on the county tax rule. Unless there are any questions from the board, this would be the time to conduct a public hearing.
Any questions from the board before I open this for a public hearing? All right. We've opened this, sorry Jim, didn't mean to scare you. We've opened this, we've opened this item for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would wish to speak to this item? Going, going, gone. I will be closing the public hearing. Bring this back to the board. What's the direction of the board?
Move approval.
All right, this is a roll call. May we have a roll call, please?
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Yuler?
Montgomery?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our 9:50 timed item, and I want to start by thanking our extremely patient Youth Commissioner members who are here today. This is a Health and Human Services item, the Youth Commission Annual Presentation. Kara Sutter will be, not Kara Sutter, will be bringing this forward, but thank you.
No. Kara Sutter will be coming just in a minute.
Excellent, thank you.
Good morning, members of, yes, it is still morning. Good members, morning of the board, Mr. Carden, Mr. Bosch. I am delighted, actually, to be introducing Kara Sutter, who has been the advisor for the Youth Commission, and indeed, they all have been very patient here. They're going to present to you their annual report. It is full of very wonderful activities that they have been involved in, and I am just so pleased to invite them to come forward to do their annual report, and they've done some tremendous things for the community, which I'm sure you will see. So Kara?
I'm going to bring them forward, and they're going to be brief. And I just want to say that these young people take their time out of busy school schedules, athletic schedules, to learn more about Placer County and to really make Placer County a great place for young people to grow up in, and I just want to commend them and let them share their activities.
Thank you for having us here. We are honored to speak on behalf of our fellow commissioners about the 15-16 commission term. Before we introduce ourselves, we want to give a brief overview of what the Placer County Youth Commission does. The Youth Commission consists of 18 formerly appointed commissioners, as well as being open to non-appointed ambassadors who can join at any point during the year. Basically, we aim to learn more about Placer County and local government, research key issues impacting youth, encourage community engagement, and be a voice for young people. We'd like to introduce ourselves and share just a little of our year. You can read more in the printed annual report we've provided. My name is Carly Kramer, and I stand for happiness, for myself and for others. I'm a junior at Colfax High School.
I'm Sean Wang, and I stand for self-expression, for myself and for others. I'm a senior at Western Sierra Collegiate Academy.
My name's Hanya McEnroth. I stand for charity, for myself and for others, and I just graduated from South Sutter Charter School.
Hi, I'm Robin Boprai. I stand for community engagement, for myself and for others, and I recently graduated from Granite Bay High School.
Hi, I'm Claire Breckenridge, and I stand for unity, for myself and for others, and I'm a junior at Placer High School. The Hexagon Project is an international project that uses the hexagon as a metaphor for interconnectedness. Members of the commission each designed a hexagon with our personal one-word stand or key motivator for our leadership work. This project also provided a chance to get to know and respect our fellow commissioners. The activity was a great way to represent what the Placer County Youth Commission stands for, and hopefully, the artwork can be displayed here in the domes, especially as hexagons would be an appropriate fit in a Buckminster Fuller building. Our stands also gave, gave us inspiration for our t-shirt design, as well as a way to reach out to the community and groups such as Roseville Excel and our outreach booth at the Rockland Community Festival.
This year, the commission continued to work to reduce stigma around mental illness as we believe this is very important to youth well-being. We enjoyed helping a PCYC ambassador create and submit a public service announcement into the statewide directing change video competition. Catherine Sobchak, PCYC Vice President, worked extremely hard and ensured that Wood Creek High School freshman PE classes received the NAMI Ending the Silence program that included key mental health education, along with presentations from young people with lived experience, who are successfully living with mental health challenges. Catherine also created a PCYC team for the NAMI Walk in Sacramento, where PCY members volunteered to help the organizers and raised over $200.
Now, as you may know, the Youth Commission was a strong advocate for the adoption of the social host ordinances in county jurisdictions, and many of us were dedicated to educating the community about the ordinance. We supported the passing of show in Roseville, Placer County's most populous jurisdiction, and collaborated with local partners to educate the public about the ordinance. The Youth Commission also hosted a meeting for law enforcement, where we were excited to share the data from Rockland and Roseville that showed a significant decrease in youth alcohol consumption in communities that had adopted the social host ordinance.
Another of the Youth Commission's efforts to further social host ordinances was at a Lincoln City Council meeting, where we spoke in favor of the city's adoption of the social host ordinance. Our presentation created a discussion both among the council and the attendees, and currently, Lincoln is considering producing a draft of a social host ordinance for further deliberation. As the Youth Commission wrote and received a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety, we held a press conference at Whitney High School, where we highlighted underage substance abuse and prevention work from local youth partners. The Commission also received awards and recognition from groups such as the Coalition for Placer Youth and the Coalition for Auburn and Lincoln Youth for being a voice in our continued fight against underage substance abuse.
Following last year's success, this year, we host the Second Annual Placer County Youth Impact Awards. The goal of the Youth Impact Awards is to recognize Placer County young people who are doing great things in their community. A $100 scholarship was awarded in each of five categories: overcoming adversity, community service, leadership, applied talents and knowledge, and a group award for community impact. This year, there were over 47 submissions, and it was very difficult to decide on a winner. PCYC, along with our special guest Supervisor Holmes, hosted a dessert evening to present the awards and recognize all participants. This year, the Youth Commission recruited new members in a few ways. We posted flyers, put announcements in school bulletins, and presented to a local 4-H club. We received a record 50 applications this year. As a two-year member of the Youth Commission, I have personally noticed both an increase in involvement and more general awareness of PCYC in the Placer County community.
We'd like to give a special thanks to the Placer County Board of Supervisors for your support in creating PCYC, to Jim Holmes and Leah Roscoe for making time for PCYC in your busy schedules, to Placer County PIO D.D. Cordell for your help and time, to the Coalition for Placer Youth for their partnership and support, and to the California Friday Night Live partnership. We are the Placer County Roadmap Chapter. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I see none from the board. Oh, wait. Supervisor Holmes?
I have some questions. There's, how many of you have graduated? Can you please, each of you, tell us where you're going to go next, what the next adventure you're going on?
I'm going to be attending Ave Maria University in Florida and majoring in international business. I'm still deciding, but I plan to pursue the sciences.
Okay. Claire, did you graduate, Claire?
No, I'll be chief.
Oh, Placer girl.
Holmes, you just couldn't pass it up, did you?
And I just want to let you know that Claire's dad works for us.
Yes, he does.
And doing a good job. I just have to say, I get teary-eyed whenever you guys come forward, because it just warms my heart to see the work that you've done. We created the Placer County Youth Commission, the commission picked up and just started doing things, the social host ordinance, among others. You've all got a great future to get going forward. Robin, you're quite the spokesperson for the Placer County Youth Commission, and I've seen you grow since you've been on the Youth Commission. And so, thank you all for your service, and it's really a delight to present to you and just attend your functions. So, thank you, thank you very much for what you've done.
I'd like to echo Supervisor Holmes' comments, and thank you all for your service, and I'm just always delighted to see so many powerful women representing this group. No offense to the gentlemen, we love powerful gentlemen as well. And I'm really delighted to hear that, you know, spots on the commission have become highly competitive. That's great, how many people are now applying for this. Means you've got a terrific set of folks to choose from, and I think I see very bright things for you all, not just in your educational opportunities, but for Placer County and for helping direct the youth of Placer County on some better paths. So, thank you all for that. All right. Okay, having completed all our timed items, we are now going to move to our department items. I noticed that they are sorted alphabetically backwards this time, so we are going to start with Treasure Tax Collector, and we're going to be giving a presentation on the Community Choice Aggregation Program and asked to take a few actions. Janine Windushausen presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, county council, county executive officer. You, Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasure Tax Collector, you have before you several action items related to community choice aggregation. Those are to receive a presentation and an update on progress, to authorize discussions with eligible cities, and to approve two contract extensions with Tibbs Consulting and Steve Nichols. And with that, that's a perfect segue for me to- that, that's a perfect segue for me to introduce the two of them and to start the presentation. So I do have with me Steve Nichols and Dr. Dean Tibbs, who are lead consultants on exploring the potential and the feasibility for a community choice aggregation program. As I mentioned, I'm going to give a little bit of background on what community choice aggregation is, why we think there are some advantages in Placer County, the various phases of developing a program, and an update on progress to date, and then next steps. So what is community choice aggregation? AB 117, which was passed, I believe it was in 2002, authorizes cities and/or counties to establish programs to aggregate the electrical loads of rate payers in their jurisdiction, and to purchase and provide the electricity over the existing investor-owned utility transmission and delivery systems. The idea is that the CCA would buy and build, buy and/or build power, it can be locally sourced power, and be able to pass on lower costs, have local control over rates and incentives. Again, the investor-owned utility maintains the energy delivery system. They also provide billing and collection. And the ultimate goal is to provide benefit to homes and businesses within the jurisdiction through that local control, providing competitive rates and achieving economic and environmental benefits and goals. So who's jumping in? We're not alone. And that's one of the things that I want to state here, is that we're not alone. Marin Clean Energy was the first program in California. It was followed by Sonoma Clean Energy and the City of Lancaster. Within the last couple of weeks, the city and county of Sacramento has, San Francisco, has launched their program. There are about fifteen other jurisdictions, either on their own or collectively with other local government entities who are pursuing implementation of community choice aggregation programs. Recently, we were at a conference in San Jose, attended by probably about four hundred representatives of local government entities and also energy sector representatives. And it was stated there that it's expected that about sixty percent of California electricity rate payers will be covered by a community choice aggregation program within the next five years. I want to note that for the rest of the presentation, I'll be referring to community choice energy, and that is a common reference because it is more explanatory than community choice aggregation, community choice energy, or CCE. So, what might this look like to the taxpayer? This is an actual bill, customer information redacted, but an actual bill from Sonoma County, and it shows how a PG&E bill will look like after a CCA program is implemented, again, in this case, in Sonoma County. And so, the investor-owned utility would break out their delivery and delivery service charges, and then the community choice aggregation program would provide the energy portion on the billing. There is imposed by the Public Utilities Commission something that is called PCIA, or Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, and that is included in the power charge of the CCA. That is essentially an exit fee, and it goes to the investor-owned utility to compensate them for their investment in providing energy and having it unanticipated that that energy would be provided by someone else, and for them to have disposition of that energy that will no longer be used. So why do we think there might be a local advantage for Placer County? A CCA has control over designing rate structure based on local needs, local priorities, and can also provide a variety of incentives such as rebates and performance incentives. Also, there is an opportunity for CCEs to participate in the public goods charge that is charged to non-residential customers and then re-offered through energy efficiency programs. It's also an opportunity in Placer County particularly to optimize local resources related to biomass for forest fuel load reduction and reduction of forest fire threat, to incentivize large-scale solar, to utilize existing hydropower, and also to potentially develop small hydro, to utilize landfill gas and other waste energy, including biodigestion, and also to optimize demand-response. There's also another advantage, and that has to do with cost-effective local financing that can be provided through the Treasury, and also the ability to organize all this around local goals and policies related to economic development. There is also the opportunity for innovative local partnerships that could include the cities. With Roseville accepted because they have their own municipal utility company and are not, or municipal utility and are exempted under the law, with Placer County Water Agency, with the West Placer Waste Management Authority, with NGOs such as Sierra Business Council, and also with the IOUs themselves on things like microgrid. So what does energy consumption look like in Placer County? We have obtained information on PG&E. We're in the process of obtaining information from Liberty Energy on rate payer consumption. But in the PG&E territory, the unincorporated area of Placer County comprises almost fifty percent of the load, followed by Rockland and Lincoln with almost twenty-four and sixteen percent respectively. The other jurisdictions combined total over just about ten percent. And there is a small handful of utility customers in the city of Roseville that are served by PG&E. So why is this timely and important? As I identified, there's an emerging trend in local jurisdictions, and as I already pointed out, that trend points to about sixty percent of rate payers in California being covered by a community choice energy program. Nationwide, this is also gaining momentum. There's about five or six states who are moving forward with community choice energy programs as well. There is the opportunity for community partnering that I mentioned. Also, critical resource availability. That has to do with the fact that with a number of these types of programs coming on, they will be competing for energy procurement. They will also be competing for service providers. And I think one of the things that we need to be cognizant of should the board and city councils decide to move forward, is that we don't want to be at the end of the line for those service providers. It's timely because of the low-cost energy market. We don't know how long rates will, energy costs will stay low, but they are at historic lows currently. And then also, as I mentioned, the economic development opportunities. And that includes hard-to-reach and disadvantaged sectors of our community. We will be providing greater detail at a subsequent board meeting about potential economic benefits. One of the things I want to point out is that the PUC is currently in their public goods charge allotment cycle. And if there is an approval to move forward subsequently, we want to get into that cycle, and the deadline for that is this coming November. And we estimate that that could mean about $3 million allocated to Placer County per year. And if we miss this cycle, it could be three to five years before we're eligible again. If we miss it, the money that would otherwise come to Placer County, based on what is being paid and collected in public goods charges here in Placer County, will be reallocated to other jurisdictions outside of Placer County. So we have identified three phases. The first phase is assessment due diligence and planning. The second is implementation and startup, subject to approvals by the board and city councils. And then the third is an actual operational phase. The first phase includes economic feasibility, opportunities, and risk assessment, planning, and timelines for implementation and budget and finance. As I mentioned, I will be returning to the board to detail that information and those findings. Subject to approval, then there would be a move to Phase Two, which would start off with establishment of a joint powers authority. That joint powers authority would then take over governance and approve the implementation plan and statement of intent that is required by the PUC. That would be provided to the Board of Supervisors for review first. Also, budget and financing plans, which also will be provided to the board in a subsequent meeting within the next month or so. Also, staffing and outsourcing plans and agreements with the investor-owned utilities. We have to enter into service agreements in order to utilize their delivery systems. Then collateral and other credentials need to be posted in order to participate in the energy markets, and then the energy supply portfolio needs to be constructed. And then the final phase would be going into operation and actually doing the data exchanges with PG&E for meter reading and billing. So what has been done so far? There has been a detailed analysis of the energy load that was actually done by a consultant called Pacific Energy Advisors, and it was peer-reviewed by Dr. Tibbs. We have budget and financing plans that we will be bringing back to the board, and a risk analysis, and also an assessment of local energy resources that potentially could be utilized. We have, in substantially final draft form, the statement of intent and implementation plan, and also a draft outreach and communication plan. And I'm remiss, I should also let you know that I have Alexia Ritalic here, who actually works for the Empower Program, but is more borrowing her a little bit to support this effort. On an ongoing basis, we have communications with the PUC, Pacific Gas, and Electric, and Liberty Energy. And Steve Nichols has been primarily responsible for relationship management there. We've also had extensive discussions, particularly with Sonoma Clean Energy. We've made a couple of trips down there and spent quite a few hours with the staff there, and we're really grateful for the time that they have shared with us, from lessons learned to, you know, just experience and how they did things. The costs are recoverable, but not until really the operational phase, or at least the startup phase, when the financing is provided, and then the county can be reimbursed through that financing. The estimated Phase One costs are about $325,000, and expenditures to date have been about $160,000. And that, this speaks directly to the contracts that are subject to your approval today as well. Costs for future phases and timeline for future phasing, again, we will be providing greater detail about the timelines and the phasing. But we hope to conclude within the next couple of months, the assessment and due diligence planning phase. Part of that is going to be rolling into more robust communications with the cities. I have met with three of the city managers, and at least given them a heads-up that the county is working on this, and the county is looking forward to coming back to work further with them. Phase Two, we would expect to commence later this year and go into the third quarter of 2017, so about a year-long cycle that would include planning for startup of operations, everything from outsourcing, staffing, also energy procurement. And the costs associated with that is expected to be about $1.2 million. And then the operational phase, that's where the cost goes up, because that's where we're actually purchasing energy load. I might mention that we are not only talking to Sonoma and to Marin Counties, but we're also watching what some of the others are doing in terms of their exploration and their implementation. And what we're seeing is that our costs are, even though they were organic here, that they're pretty much consistent with what we're seeing in other areas. So the next step would be for your board to authorize the discussions with the cities, approve expenditures to continue the planning, outreach, and development. The outreach is with the cities, but it would be also with other entities such as the Chambers of Commerce, our MACs, and other venues. Then later this month, I hope to return, if not later this month, in early July, to review the detailed operational pro formas and data analysis with the board, and also budget and financing plans, and then a discussion of the risk analysis mitigations and findings. And then, along with that, would be the introduction of an ordinance authorizing to continue moving forward, and that is a non-binding authorization, and also authorizing the drafting of the JPA. Not approval of a JPA, but to draft the JPA and to further work with the cities that are interested in participating on drafting a JPA. And then, whoops, in the August, probably more like August to October timeframe, looking at approving a JPA agreement, again, subject to approval by this board and by city council. At that point, once the JPA is established, that JPA would assume fiscal responsibility and liabilities, and take out the financing fronted by the county to date. So with that, I would be glad to answer your questions, and again, reiterate that I'm looking forward to coming back to the board to share in more detail our findings to date.
Thank you, Janine. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, Janine, thank you. I'm very pleased that this whole project is moving forward. You know, one of the things that I've wanted to move the county into is utilizing more of its economic leverage for the benefit of the county as a whole, and this is a big part of that. It also fits real nicely with what we're doing with the Sunset Industrial Area. And I think it's, the options that you're providing are going to be real beneficial to assisting to move that area into development, as well as assisting with our regional university, as well as the Placer Ranch and CSUS University Project. So, very, very, very pleased that you're on top of this and you're ready to go to the next phase. I'm going to assume that when you're looking at a JPA, you're going to look at the Spa Wa WPWMA example that we currently utilize there with two members of the Board of Supervisors and representatives from the rest of the cities, or the rest of the partners.
That's, conceptually, what we have discussed. We've looked at existing JPAs. We've looked at what the other startup CCEs have done. We think that we might be able to adopt a more efficient model, and a model that is after some of the other JPAs, that would have a representation that is reflective of that load, since the policies are being made that affect those rate payers that represent that load.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But I'll be providing more detail on that in a draft JPA, and be discussing that further with cities.
I don't see my other supervisors' lights on, so I'm going to make my comments on this. Like Jack, I'm delighted to see this coming forward. I think Placer County, with our abundant renewable natural resources, solar, water, biomass for some of our forest work projects. for some of our forest work projects. I think we have some incredible opportunities to, in a very thoughtful and sustainable way, create opportunities for all of us here in Placer County, whether it's through our waste facilities and some of the, some of the things that can be generated out of that, or, you know, with existing projects like the Middle Fork and the hydro that's generated out of that. So I'm very interested in moving forward on this and really drilling down to determine who are our partners, who wants to engage with us on this, and what does it really look like moving forward? How does that JPA work? What are really our costs versus our expectations about what we, meaning we as a community, are going to achieve out of this? Particularly interested, as you can imagine, in the Liberty Energy piece to understand how eastern Placer County can participate and benefit from a CCE. And so really, those are my comments. Any additional comments from any board members? Any members of the public wish to comment on this agenda item? Would either of the two gentlemen in the front row want to make any comments on this? And I call you both gentlemen, knowing you even as I do.
Oh.
All right, excellent. I will bring it back to the board then. Janine, was there anything you wanted to close with or finish with?
No, I just appreciate the board's leadership on this.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board? We have a motion, Duran, a second, Holmes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move to Item Seven, Public Works and Facilities, Petite Creek Lift Station Improvements Project. And we're being asked to approve an award and execute a competitive bid contract with Clyde G. Stiegel Incorporated. Walt Schwal presenting.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery and Board members. I'm Walt Schwal. I'm the Senior Engineer with Department of Public Works and Facilities. The first thing I need to point out is that based on discussion with County Council earlier this morning, the resolution attached to the memo is not basically necessary for, based on the action that we're requesting, and so we're asking you to just disregard that resolution as part of this action. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Mahoney, who's the project manager for the lift station project.
And before we do that, I just want to clarify with County Council, is there a particular formula for how we disregard something, or do we just disregard it?
I know, it's really, the action doesn't even refer to the resolution, so I like to think of the resolution as sort of inadvertently included.
Okay.
These kinds of actions don't require resolutions. Some departments include them, some department doesn't. You'll notice that three Public Works items all are like this and don't have a resolution.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Mahoney, Associate Civil Engineer, Department of Public Works and For some background, Petite Creek Lift Station was constructed in 1987, approximately 30 years ago, and is located in Roseville, southwest of the intersection of Sierra College Boulevard and Old Auburn Road. The station is located in Sewer Maintenance District Number Two and serves 77 residential homes. Many components of the station are at the end of their useful service life, including the pumps, the discharge piping, valves, electrical control panels, and the backup generator. This project proposes to replace these components, and it also includes addition of emergency storage to minimize the potential for a sewage spill from station failure. The project also includes addition of a control building to protect the new panels from the elements. On March 22nd, your board approved the plans and specifications and authorized the Director of the Department of Public Works and Facilities or designee to advertise for bids. Bids were opened on May 3rd, and six bids were received. Lowest responsive bidder was Clyde G. Stiegel Incorporated from Loomis with a bid of $409,038. In order to proceed with the project, staff recommends that your board approve the award and execution of the contract with Clyde G. Stiegel Incorporated for $409,038, and authorize the Director of the Department of Public Works and Facilities or designee to execute contract change orders up to 10% of the contract amount funded through SMD2 user fees. And I am happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions from any board member on this item? I see none. Any questions from any member of the public on this item? I see none. I will bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board? All right, we're going to call that for Holmes and Yular. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move now to 7B. We're getting a report from Brett Story on the Joint Powers Authority and the Middle Fork Project 2015 Summary of Operations.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair and Board Members. Brett Story, now find myself residing in Environmental Utilities. So I'm still going to do the same work I've done before, hopefully better and more for you. So, at any rate, waiting for my presentation to come up, in there somewhere.
Jeremy, do we have a PowerPoint for this agenda item?
If not, I can wing it.
If not, Brett will wing it.
I'll start winging it. As you know, we are a member of the JPA of the Middle Fork Project, and as such, two of your members, Supervisors Wigant and Holmes, sit on that board, but we like to bring it to your board once a year to give you a detailed set of information on the audited reports. And those audits have been complete. And Supervisor Duran, you asked last year, they have replaced their auditor. We now have Davis Farr as the new auditor.
Brett, we do not have a PowerPoint, so.
Oh, I sent one in.
Continue winging it. Thank you.
Okay. I will get that to you because it's got a lot of the detailed information on it, but I'll give you an overview of that today. We are in the second full year of PCWA Operational Control. They manage the project on our, on all of our behalf, and all is going very well, including all of the work with PG&E is still part of the control network. All of the invoicing and payments is all going well. We've had very few exceptions with either PG&E or KISO, so that part has been done very well. On the marketing revenue side, remember, we're talking about the 2015 year, which was the fifth year of a drought. So we only had about 40% average inflow into storage that year. It was the eighth driest year since 1967, and so we're now, as you know, moved out of that. But the prices were also 30% less than the year before. As Janine pointed out, the power market is at a historic low now. It's not expected to change for several years. So we, we do have some internal people that buy and sell power, and they've been able to take advantage of some of that and gain back some of that income. There was a nice net income. Essentially, what you need to know is the adjusted 2015 budget was around $30 million, and the actual budget was around $29 million with all of the budget cuts we made to make sure that we did not go over. So the total gross revenue was about 4% less than we had forecast. The expenditures, though, were about 22% less, and there ended up being a five, roughly a $5 million contribution towards reserve funding. And if you'll recall, we have three reserves. One is the operating reserve, which with that $5.3 million added to it, now totals $25.4 million. So we still needed nearly $3 million to fill that operating reserve. The emergency reserve is about $2 million. We are actually reevaluating that in light of new insurance and risk policies that are going forward. It may or may not need to stay $2 million. We're hopeful it'll actually go down because of some other steps we've taken on the project. The capital reserve is around $27 million, and we have yet to fund that. As you recall, also on the Middle Fork reserves, by Middle Fork policy, all three of those reserves must be fully funded before net revenues can be distributed, even though the contributions were higher. The reserve contributions were higher than expected, even though we had the drought year. That's that $5.3 million. So that was the positive news. We had reduced capital projects along with the reducing revenue, so we didn't outspend ourselves. This year, though, for 2016, you know, we budget, as you'll recall, 80% of an average year. We think it's going to be higher than that. The reservoirs are full. We're actually at about 109% of average. The reservoirs right now are full. In fact, one side note of that is there will be seven days a week rafting, so please get out there on the, on the river and raft and spend your dollars in Placer County, right? That's the way that works. So all of those folks are very happy with that. The energy markets still are, have extremely low natural gas prices, so we're not seeing much change in that. The solar generation is also, because of the amount of it, is pushing that market down or holding it down. That should begin to level off, hopefully, and we won't see the same effect in years going forward. The revenue side, we, the precipitation, of course, is higher, but the enterprise prices are lower, and we believe that we'll be somewhere close to the budget. This year's budget is $41 million, and of that, there's about $12 or $13 million in capital costs. There's about 20 or so million in actual operating expenses, so that, that would leave around $10 million if all goes well that would be put into, we'd finish the, the operating reserve, we'd put, we'd complete the emergency reserve, and we'd begin to put into the capital reserve. So we're getting closer to that point. If we have another couple of years like we had this past year, we should get to the point where distributions can be made to all parties. Just a little bit on the project, we are continuing with risk reduction with the, all of the, as you can imagine, hydroelectric has a lot of terms to it and a lot of federal and state agencies. We are keeping up with those. We are training all of the people in PCWA to be at the level they need to be. One of the more significant items which will be happening here shortly, we've, we've determined that the best course of operations for long-term stability and save budget costs is to outsource. I brought to your board last year to outsource the control function rather than building our own control center and hiring a number of operators. It will be at least a million. We're not sure yet of the total dollars annual savings by contracting that out to Northern California Power Agency. Those discussions are nearing final stages. There will be a move to the PCWA Board for approval. I'll be sending you an email regarding the details of that so that you're well informed of what, what is happening there here shortly. As I mentioned, we're looking at an insurance risk review to help lower our, our risk and our cost, the project. On the infrastructure side, there, there's still, we're not ready to build because the FERC license still, we were done in 2012. We keep getting the wait till next year, wait till next year from the state. They told it to us again. They're thinking now 2018 will be the year we'll get the license. But we still have to prepare with permits and working with the other agencies to get those projects ready to go. We also have done quite a bit of updating of communications and software to make it easier to deal in the energy market, because the quicker you can deal in the energy market, the more money you can make in the energy market. So our systems are now all online and can be handed off to the state and can be controlled instantaneously, which helps bring a greater number of revenues to the project by, by doing that. Again, we don't have the FERC license. It just reverts back to the old one. I've told you before, we're still in that same condition. We meet all of those conditions that are actually, cost us less to meet the older conditions than the new ones, so, but we're still, the river is still in great shape and being taken care of. The big push this year and next is our, our contract with PG&E ends December 31st, 2017. So while we now have the control center moving forward with NCPA, now myself and Rob Sandman and Heath is also involved, along with PCWA staff, we're beginning to outreach to potential future contract, power contracting, of which the CCE, as you heard, could be a portion of that, but we also have a number of ways to dice the, the power sales up. There is the energy itself, there's the capacity, and there is also renewable energy credits. There's possibly carbon credits in the future, so we're looking at every avenue, every opportunity we can to put contracts in place well before we switch off of PG&E and on to wherever we go in with this. So that will be, this, this year, we'll, we'll move forward and sort of vet through all of those, and then next year would be the year of actually signing contracts. And of course, we bring that information back to your board. And just, it's always a great chart to show the, the revenue volatility. You've seen it before. It's the up and down and up and down with the water year, finally up this year. But just to give you a perspective, the low of the project is 209,000 megawatt hours per year. The high is about 18, 1.8 million, sorry. And the average is about 1 million. Last year, we did 310,000, so near the low. This year, we're going to be just over a million, so we're going to be about to average. So all that rainfall was wonderful. It brings us up to about average. And with the energy market low, it's obviously less dollars than we'd like, but at least we're healthy. We removed all of the obligations from the last few years of the, the forum, the water forum where we, we, the, the authority had to sell some water to help downstream activities. They sort of hold that against you. Because the Folsom Lake reached its flood capacity, we were relieved from all those obligations, which means we can fill the reservoir back up. We anticipate that it will be back to its normal, which is about 1.5 million level, so very healthy shape your watershed is in. And that is my report for last year. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from any board members on this? Great report. Brett, I do have a couple of questions and just things that I think would be in sort of the general interest to clarify. So initially, if I recall, we thought that we might start to see revenue distribution by 2017, so starting next year. Where now, unless we substantially change what we're proposing to put to reserves, is there sort of a timeframe under which you think, barring no changes to the reserve structure, that we might start to see some revenue distribution?
Can't predict the revenue. I would say what we're looking at now, that we, we know the energy market is going to be flat the next several years. If, if, if we were to get another year like this, that could possibly fill up all of the reserves or come close to it, which, which means that if there were another year beyond that, you, you saw from my numbers this year that it would be about $10 million roughly. And again, I'm, I'm just estimating based on previous year's numbers. The problem will be is FERC license will come in, and our costs will go up substantially, particularly on the capital cost side. So I, I, I would.
Additional revenues will be offered.
I'm going to get tasered by my, my cohorts at PCWA if I answer anything beyond that, but it, what we, what we will try to do each year is make an estimate of where we think that's going to go, and we do that when we, we accept the annual budget, which is in October.
Okay.
So we are working those numbers now. In fact, I'm, I have to leave here to go work budget items for the, for the upcoming budget, and we're, we, we try to take a look at that, so.
Okay. And then my recollection, and feel free, anyone on the board or anyone else to correct me on this, is that when we had had the initial policy discussion about how those revenues, potential future, still not in our pocket revenues, were to be allocated, we agreed that those would be for sort of one-time, not ongoing costs. And while we weren't quite as narrow in our scope as PCWA, it was really basically sort of infrastructure that we were proposing to use those revenues.
Yes, you have a budget policy now that outlines essentially what you just talked about. It's whatever the audited results from the year prior would become available for the board to put towards whatever infrastructure projects you deem necessary. And just as a side note, PCWA has actually looked at ours, likes ours, and is rewriting their policy to do, I don't know about the infrastructure piece of it, but they liked the approach that the county and your board accepted, and so they're redoing their policy or updating their policy.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Brett.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
And I will get you the details.
Thank you. Good, good job tap dancing, though. We appreciate that. All right, we're going to move to Items C, D, and E. We are going to hear this as one presentation, but it will require three votes.
Okay, and I'll try and move quick. Kevin Tabor, Public Works and Facilities. And the, these next three items, I'll, I'll cover them all as one, just, just for information, and then, then ask for the, well, whatever I do on the individuals. So, so this summer, we've got three, which one do I press? There we go. We've got three major contracts that we're asking you to approve today. Overall, we're going to be administering surface treatments and overlays on 80 miles of road, but, and that, that will include chip seal, microsurface slurry seal, cape seal, which is a combination of chip and microsurface, and then hot mix asphalt overlay. The first contract, which is Item 7C, it's Contract 914, Tiger Construction was the successful low bidder. This is a federally funded project that's going to cover about 3.6 miles, including the section of Douglas Boulevard from Barton West to Auburn Folsom, and then roads in the Auburn area, which are Nevada Street, Edgewood, Richardson Drive, and Dry Creek Road west of Highway 49. The, the next contract, 940, which is actually Item 7E, but I did them in numerical order for this presentation, is a in numerical order for this presentation, is a, is the contract that Valley Slurry Seal, VSS, there we go, sorry, that VSS International is the low bidder and this is the chip seal, micro-surface slurry seal and the, and the chip seal project that's, that's going to cover a hundred and fifteen different roads, I won't list them all, and it's about sixty-five miles. Great. The next contract, contract nine forty-one, which is item seven D, Tyker Construction was also the low bidder on this one, it's hot mix asphalt overlay project, that's going to be covering eighteen different roads and cover about six, six total miles. So, I'll briefly show you the areas, this overall county map, that, to try and make it show up for the presentation, we just highlighted roads in green that, that are all three contracts. So, you can see we're going all the way from West Roseville, Sheridan area, moving eastward through Auburn, Forest Hill area, up into Serene Lakes and then also on the west shore in Tahoe. And the next, next few maps will give a little bit more detail on that. The, the red roads are overlay, the, the green roads are, are either chip seal or micro-surface or cape, so we're doing Bianchi Estates there, Antelope PFE roads, the two roads there on the, the right-hand side of the screen are Sierra College and Douglas Boulevard. Moving on, this is chip seal and, and micro-surfacing in the Sheridan, Sheridan area, the green there, included Virginia Town Road on this map, even though that's a, that's a leftover work from, from last summer's contract, also a fiscal year fifteen, sixteen project. Moving eastward, red roads again are, are overlay roads, those are the federally funded roads and for contract nine fourteen, then, then the green areas are, are all the other surface treatments. And then one more slide, and this is the far, further east in the county, we're covering roads in the Serene Lakes area, the green roads there on the left and on the right-hand side. What I'm asking you to approve today are the red roads on, on the west shore of Tahoe there in the Pineland area, went ahead and highlighted roads that we completed last September up there off of Old County in the upper right-hand corner of the slide, also a fifteen, sixteen project. So, altogether, between Virginia Town Road and three contracts we're asking you to approve today, that's, that's eighty miles of, of, of overlay and, and/or surface treatment, that's the good news. And the news gets better because they're, upon anticipation of the award of these contracts, Valley Slurry Seal and Tyker are, are ready to start next Monday and complete a majority of the work by the end of the month, which is going to be great. Just so you know, Supervisor Yuler, the work on Douglas Boulevard is all scheduled as night work to reduce impacts and it's going to dovetail into Tyker's schedule, at least for the overlay. Majority of their work will actually be at night, including in the Auburn area, so it's going to be a busy few weeks starting Monday. So, with that, I will ask for your approval and answer any questions about any of the contracts, but item seven C asks for your approval to award and execute competitive bid number one zero five four three to Tyker Construction, contract nine fourteen, in the amount of two million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or is designated to execute contract change or up to ten percent of the contract amount.
See Professor Yuler, your light is on.
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, we're calling it an overlay, but that does include some element of grinding down the existing road surface?
Yes.
Okay, so there will be a drop in elevation for part of it?
Yes, for, for Douglas Boulevard in particular, we're going to, back in nineteen ninety-five, coincidentally, it was also Tyker Construction, they placed open graded asphalt overlay and we're grinding that off and we're, we're taking it down a total of two tenths across the entire area of the roadway and then placing rubberized material, actually, rubberized hot mix on Sierra College as well. We're not doing as much grinding on Sierra College, but some.
Okay. And you specified Douglas would be night, what about Sierra College?
Definitely night work, yes. And the plan right now is to start on the evening of Sunday, the nineteenth, taking some coordination with the City of Roseville for, for loop replacement, all that stuff, yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I, I saw guys out marking Douglas the other day and I got very excited.
You and me both.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions from the other?
I'll just comment, I'm just pleased that Edgewood Road is finally going to be taken care of. I keep getting, over the years, I've gotten phone calls from residents, some of them no longer with us, they've been waiting so long, so I'm glad to see that happen.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, in preparation for that work, we'll, we'll have, we're, we're grinding down the surface of the road underneath the, the tunnel there so that, you know, we'll grind out three inches and replace three inches so that we don't further reduce the, the clearance under, underneath the UP crossing, under crossing there.
Kevin, thank you for the presentation. As, as you know, in Tahoe, we have ski season and road construction season. Have we coordinated with all the other road construction projects up there to make sure that we're not going to be on top of each other in any case?
To the best extent possible, I think so, yes. In Tahoe, I have been in contact with the resident engineer for Caltrans for the west shore projects there and the way we specified in, in the, during the bidding process was work on Tahoe's west shore there, the overlay project, would have to be completed before June thirtieth or after Labor Day and that's one of the sites that Tyker will do after Labor Day.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, that's good news. And it also, that will allow time for the Wardwell Water District to finish their construction, it was supposed to be done two years ago, but, yes, and Tyker also has several other overlays with Caltrans, so they're definitely in the loop as far as, as coordinating that.
Good, and, and I'm assuming again, just because of temperatures, that this, this work will actually be occurring during the day in Tahoe?
In Tahoe, yes, yeah. We, we, last year's project with Delta Construction was a, it was a successful project, but they ended up going towards a later end of September and, yeah, they dealt with some cold temperatures.
Issues, yeah, absolutely. Any other questions from the board on any of these three items? Any member of the public wish to weigh in on any of these three items? Right, what's the pleasure of the board? And remember that we need to take these individually. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there are a lot of people who are going to appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you for your support. It's, you know, we, it's, it's some one-time money that we're able to, to capitalize on and get a lot of work done.
And I believe it's about eight percent of our county roadways. We have about a thousand miles in county roadways.
Yes, yes, exactly. Altogether between...
I'm sorry, not eight percent.
Between these three projects and then the remaining Virginia Town work, it's about eight million dollars worth of work that will commence.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to move to agenda item number eight, Health and Human Services. Michelle, I don't know if you're a Beecham or a Beauchamp?
I think either one.
Or none of the above?
I answered to both. I think we've crossed over officially.
We have, it's afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Michelle Beauchamp, Business Operations Program Manager with Health and Human Services Administration. I'm before you today to request adoption of the HHS Annual Contract Resolution authorizing the Director or the Assistant Director of Health and Human Services in partnership with the County Executive Office, County Council, and Risk Management to execute sixty-two identified expenditure agreements and sign subsequent amendments up to a maximum amount of eleven point nine million dollars. The HHS Annual Contract Resolution identifies specific agreements to renew. All executed agreements will remain within ten percent of the prior term's annual amount and will allow for subsequent amendments of no more than ten percent. The criteria used to select these agreements are recurring agreements with an annual contract amount of less than four hundred thousand dollars each, originally approved as standalone, standalone items by the Board of Supervisors and executed with an effective date beginning in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. These agreements currently totaled ten point million, ten point eight million dollars and are funded seventy-nine percent through outside sources such as federal and state revenue and twenty-one percent general fund. All contract costs and offsetting revenues are included in the HHS fiscal year sixteen, seventeen requested budget. Your approval of this resolution in no way obligates the county to move forward with any individual contract agreement should programmatic or available funding change and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from any member of the board? Seeing none, any questions from any member of the public? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Going to move to item eight B, Support for Mentally Ill Housing Needs. Marie Osborne presenting.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman, Chairperson, and members of the board. I am Marie Osborne with the Adult System of Care. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Maureen Baum and our Director to request that the board approve three separate items. The first item we are requesting the board to approve is a one-year agreement with Advocates of Mentally Ill Housing, also known as AMI, in the amount of one million, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign this agreement and subsequent amendments not to exceed ten percent of the total agreement amount consistent with the current agreement subject matter and scope of work. At this time, I'd like to provide you a very brief overview of this contract. This agreement will allow the contractor to oversee various programs, including supporting the housing needs of mentally ill residents who are involved in the adult system of care, assisting with the mobile crisis triage team, and administering the Transitional Employment Services Program that we have. This agreement was initially awarded through the Request for Proposal Number one zero three five one for the Mental Health Service Act Plan for the period of October first, two thousand and fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. During the two previous periods, this agreement has been amended to expand similar services through additional grant opportunities. The full impact of this agreement is funded by state and federal sources and the related revenue and expenditures are included in the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen requested budget. No county general funds are required for this agreement. With this, I would like to recommend approval of this agreement and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any member of the board? Any questions from any member of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Marie, I believe you're presenting our next item as well.
Thank you. The second, the second request is for the board to approve a two-year agreement with Sierra Mental Wellness Group to provide mental health crisis services, specialty mental health services, child welfare and couples counseling services in the amount of two million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign this agreement and subsequent agree, amendments not to exceed five percent of the total agreement amount consistent with the current agreement's subject matter and scope of work. A brief background for your information, the Sierra Mental Wellness Group has been a longstanding and vital partner with Placer County in the areas of providing outpatient mental health services, emergency mental health services pursuant to the Welfare and Institution Code, Section fifty-one fifty, oops, sorry, mental health, emergency psychiatric evaluations pursuant to Welfare and Institution Code, Section fifty-one fifty are mandated services to allow for individuals with mental health ill symptoms to receive involuntary psychiatric inpatient treatment if they pose to be a danger to themselves, others, or are gravely disabled. During fiscal year two thousand and fourteen to fifteen, Placer County was responsible for providing crisis evaluations to three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine of its residents, including children, adults, and older adults. The demand for these crisis services continued to increase during the last three years, we've seen an overall increase of seven percent. Sierra Mental Wellness Group with this agreement also provides a crisis worker at Sutter Roseville Medical Center where approximately seventy percent of the crisis evaluations are conducted as well as have an on-call crisis worker to respond to Sutter Auburn Faith, Tahoe Forest Hospital, to the jail and to the juvenile detention center. In addition to providing mental health crisis services, mental health, Sierra Mental Wellness Group also provides specialty mental health services to our adults and older adults and during this, in both the Tahoe region and western Placer County, during fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, Sierra Mental Wellness Group provided these services to twen, two thousand, seven hundred residents. And one note, one highlight is during the past year, Sierra Mental Wellness Group has been hot, able to hire a psychiatrist for the, for the Tahoe region, which we are really excited about. Revenue and expenditures for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen include nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars or eighty-four percent in federal and state funds and a hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars or sixteen percent in county general funds and is included in the fiscal, the department's fiscal year sixteen, seventeen requested budget. The remainder will be included in the department's fiscal year seventeen, eighteen requested budget. With this, I would like to recommend approval of this agreement and will be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any member of the board? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Marie.
I have one more.
You have one more, okay.
The third and final request for the board to approve is a one-year agreement with Turning Point Community Programs in the amount of four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign this agreement and subsequent amendments not to exceed five percent of the total agreement amount consistent with the current agreement subject matter and scope of work. This agreement was initially awarded in the Request for Proposal Number one zero three five one for the Mental Health Service Act Programs for the period of October first, two thousand and fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. During the two, during the previous two-year period, the agreement has been amended to expand similar services through additional grant opportunities. Placer County has contracted with Turning Point Community Program since June of two thousand and eight. One component of this agreement with Turning Point is to provide an array of intensive mental health outpatient services to residents who experience severe and persistent mental illness and who are at risk of homelessness, inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and incarceration. For the ninety-one individuals who've been receiving these services over the last two years, they have seen a reduction in inpatient psychiatric hospitals by forty-one percent, have seen a decrease in incarceration by forty-seven percent and days of homelessness by eighty-one percent. Turning Point also continues to provide psychiatric support to the adult system of care and the children's system of care by contracting with psychiatrists and nurse practitioners to work within our two clinics and this has been a very effective and cost, this has been a valuable and cost-effective service for our adult and children's system of care. The other component to Turning Point's contract is they have now hired a program coordinator to assist with our new Health Three Sixty program and this coordinator will assist with linking clients and educating people on primary care and linking them to get those services. The full amount of this agreement is funded by federal and state sources and the related revenue and expenditures are included in the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen requested budget and there are no county general funds required for this agreement. With this, I recommend approval of this agreement and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, pleasure of the board. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please note that Supervisor Yuler was out of the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to move to item eight E. I believe Twyla Abramson is going to be presenting this, Youth and Family Advocacy Services.
Good afternoon again, Twyla Abrahamson with the Children's System of Care. Placer County Health and Human Services has operated an integrated services model of, of care for youth and families since nineteen ninety-six, which has allowed us to significant flex... flexibility in utilizing our funding streams to create family-centered, community-based programs, including child welfare, mental health, and juvenile justice. This is, as you know, incredibly rare for county-based services. As part of this integrated system of care, there's been a commitment and a requirement to provide family and youth, or professional supports to families receiving any of these formal services. It has been demonstrated that mentoring, advocacy, education, and outreach and engagement provided by advocates who have lived experience with our systems leads to less confusion, less grievances, and shortened court proceedings. Family advocates served over a thousand families in Placer County over the past two years. We're requesting the following action. Approve this two-year contract with Mental Health America of Northern California in a total amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, with no net county cost. The funding is included in the department's fiscal year sixteen-seventeen proposed budget and the fiscal year seventeen-eighteen requested budget. We're also asking that the board authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract and any subsequent amendments up to ten percent of the total contract, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions from any member of the board? Seeing none, any questions from any member of the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now going to move to item eight F, Child Care Services for CalWorks Participants. Greg, Greg, I'm probably going to get your last name wrong. Geisler?
Greg.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon. Greg Geisler, Program Manager for the CalWorks Employment Services Program in Human Services. We are requesting the board approve a contract with Placer County Office of Education for child cared services for California work opportunity and responsibility to kids, CalWorks Welfare Work Programs for the period of July first, two thousand and sixteen, sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, with no net county cost, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract and subsequent amendments up to five percent of the total contract amount consistent with the agreement subject. Background, since nineteen ninety-eight, when CalWorks was implemented, we have partnered and contracted with Placer County Office of Education for our Stage One childcare funding, providing childcare for our CalWorks participants. It's worked out to be a very favorable partnership between us and, and Placer County Office of Education, and is also very beneficial to our participants who have their staff embedded with us in our Rockland office, and they also cover the childcare for, childcare for participants after they leave CalWorks. The amount in the contract is the same as was requested last year, as we continue to have a large number of folks, especially with young children, participating and exiting from CalWorks. This is exclusively funded by state and federal funds, therefore, there's no county general funds required. We are recommending that the board approve this contract, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from any member of the board? Seeing none, any questions from any member of the audience? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Go Bears.
Thank you very much. Yay Stanford. Sorry, had to say it. All right, we are now going to move to our agenda item nine, County Executive Office. We're being asked to adopt the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen-seventeen proposed budget. Andy, I believe there is one change to this agenda item. Did you want to address that first?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, thank you very much, Andy Heath from the County Executive Office. With today's action, we're asking that the board table one of the recommended actions as far as adopting the special districts budget for the two thousand and fif- two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen period. The information for the special districts budgets were, was inadvertently left out of the, of the board pocket and was not disseminated as such, and we recommend that this be tabled until June twenty-first for consideration.
And just to clarify, we do have that information. It was just left out of the package?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Budget, the budget's done, it just was left out of the pocket.
Okay.
So again, we're, our staff is asking today that your board consider adoption of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen proposed budget that begins on July first next month. As requested that the board approve and provide any necessary direction on the proposed budget itself for two thousand and sixteen-seventeen. Also consider the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen position allocation ordinance and some of the changes that were recommended to that. Also the master fixed asset list and changes that are being recommended to that. And then finally designate any unassigned carryover fund balance consistent with the budget and financial policies that have been put in place by your board, and then the other identified priorities that have been discussed over the last few months as part of challenges and choices in the priorities workshop, with the sixteen-seventeen final budget that comes back to your board on September sixteenth. Looking at what we've done to date, as part of the budget development process for two thousand and sixteen-seventeen, your board may recall that we had a priorities workshop where we asked departments to prepare a state of the department identifying some of the challenges and issues that they saw facing them moving forward into fiscal year two thousand and sixteen-seventeen and beyond, and identify some of the priorities and some of the challenges associated with staffing that they saw as well commensurate with providing programs and services within their departments. This information was gathered in the County Executive Office, and we put together a priorities workshop on some of the themes and core priorities that we thought your board should be aware of in January to better prepare and inform the preparation process for the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen budget. Many departments made a presentation, and your board did provide direction at that time. We also came back in March of two thousand and sixteen and gave you an update on where we saw the current fiscal year, fiscal year fifteen, sixteen going, from a fund balance perspective and where we thought we would end up, and then also some two thousand and sixteen-seventeen budget consideration issues that we saw materializing specifically as related to the state budget and some of the other challenges or opportunities that we saw and that may develop as part of the coming year's budget. The Challenges and Choices Workshop was held last month. Your board may recall that we identified, similar to what we did last year, a number of challenges and choices that your board provided further direction on in May two thousand and sixteen that better informed the proposed budget that you see before you today, which is where we're at today with the proposed budget. And then, as I mentioned, the final budget will come back to your board on September sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Also in here is an element that the, is the capital facilities financing plan that is intended to come to your board on July twenty-fifth in a Monday workshop up in the Tahoe area to better inform the capital sections and, more importantly, the financing of the, of certain capital activities that are on tap and may be priorities consistent with the workshops. That'll be coming back on, on July twenty-fifth and inform that September two thousand and sixteen final budget. Looking at the economy and some of the things that are considered as part of the development of the budget, we are seeing continued upward growth in county-wide assessed valuation. For fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, the current fiscal year that we're in, assessed valuation grew to more than sixty billion dollars, which is at a level that is commensurate with where we were just before the recession. So it's anticipated that we will continue to grow, albeit not at the levels that we've seen in the past, where we had ten percent growth last year, seven percent growth the year before that, but we have forecasted approximately four percent growth in the budget for two thousand and sixteen-seventeen. We're also seeing growth in discretionary revenues that are tied to the economy, particularly the sales tax, and we see some growth there, and the transient occupancy tax that is an indicator of the economy doing, doing better now. Declining unemployment is a factor. More people are simply employed in Placer County. Four point three percent unemployment as of April two thousand and sixteen versus four point nine percent the year before that, and about six percent the year before that. So you can see that unemployment continues to decline in Placer County as more people go back to work. So far, the state really hasn't shown us anything that we need to be super concerned about with respect to the state budget that will be, that will be coming out, but, you know, we're, we're waiting on, in the wings to see exactly what happens. But one thing that is mentioned as part of the state budget and the delivery by the governor of the message in the state budget is to be careful about program expansion and really focus on fiscal restraint, and that our governor does see an economic downturn will happen at some point in time in the future, and we've had several years of economic growth following our recent great recession. And then we also have increasing costs for CalPERS retirement and healthcare, and this is, this can be somewhat significant, where in, in the fiscal year sixteen-seventeen budget that we have for the proposed budget this year, there's about a hundred and eight million dollars countywide for both retirement costs, CalPERS retirement costs, and healthcare combined, and this compares to a hundred million that we anticipate for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, the current year. So about an eight percent growth there. We do have a chart later on in the presentation, and I'll show you exactly what that is going to look like for the next four or five years as well, but those costs, those costs are a significant driver to the budget moving forward. Some of the recent accomplishments and ongoing efforts that have been, that we've been working on in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, and helped inform development of the sixteen-seventeen budget are just continued vigilance on organizational fiscal stability, sustainability, where we're looking at reserves and making sure our reserves in all funds are at adequate levels, where we look, we're looking at using one-time revenues for one-time costs, likewise using ongoing revenue streams for ongoing costs, and creating that fiscal sustainability there, and really looking at streamlining and alignment of costs, where we're looking at making sure that the costs are appropriately distributed to the programs throughout the county as part of our priority-based budgeting process, and for the first time this year, you will see that all programs are costed in the budget, all three hundred and ninety-nine programs, programs have a cost. We have a focus on development, where we're looking at development as a whole within the county. The CFFP, Capital Facilities Financing Plan, will come back to your board in July, and also there's a number of development projects on top, consistent with some of the things that are going on in the Sunset Industrial Area Master Plan Update, Tahoe Area Plan Update, and looking at the Placer County Government Center Plan Update as well. So a lot on tap in terms of development that's ongoing. Implementation of the Criminal Justice Master Plan is something that's being considered. We do have the completion of the phased opening of the remaining hundred and eighty beds at the South Placer Facility that is built into the fiscal year sixteen-seventeen budget, and we also have the potential of implementing a, or building, a acute mental health wing at the South Placer Facility with a nine point five million dollar grant that we received pursuant to SB eight sixty-three, part of which will need to be funded with some discretionary funding as a match, and then exploration of a crime lab, a coroner's facility potentially, and that will be, that will come back to your board with the July twenty-fifth workshop. Housing shortfall and homelessness, just looking at some of the things that we can be doing with respect to homelessness and housing. We're looking at building into certain development and development agreements, workforce housing, and making sure that there's adequate housing for the individuals that eventually occupy those developments. And then with homelessness in particular, your board did approve a, an action a couple of board meetings ago for the homelessness item and providing support to the, to the safety aspects associated with homelessness. There's about one point eight million dollars that is built into the budget for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen related to homelessness. Much of that is related to the one point two million dollar action your board took last month, and then the other six hundred thousand dollars is for the, for the one-time costs that are associated with the temporary shelter that's in place and other staff costs. Also have environmental sustainability. With environmental sustainability, we are in the final preparation state for the PCCP Placer County Conservation Program. That is budgeted in fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, and then as part of the development of the final budget, we'll look at continued funding, one-time funding towards open space, as your board did for fifteen, sixteen, with a million dollars in additional funding. We're also looking at approach to funding unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities. So you might recall that with our OPEB, your board has made a considerable effort over the years to fund that OPEB to the point now where it is over seventy percent funded in its entirety. Of the three hundred and seventy million dollar liability, your board, as of today, has about two hundred and, almost two hundred and eighty million dollars of that in a Section one fifteen trust, also known as the CERBIT, California Employee Benefit Retirement Trust. So we continue to focus on that, because ultimately what that does is, once that's funded to a certain point, it frees up operational capacity for looking at how we want to fund the unfunded liability for retirement and/or ongoing programs that can be used, that can be funded with those ongoing dollars that would be freed up. We have continued transition of priority-based budgeting. Just mentioned that we have program costing built in the budget this year, and then continued commitment to transparency, communication, employee engagement, and succession planning, where we're looking at creating opportunities for employees and the organization to capture institutional knowledge that those employees have as they leave the county, and coming up with transition plans for that. Moving on to the budget as a whole, you can see we're recommending a seven hundred and eighty-two point four million dollar proposed budget for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen. That compares to the eight hundred and sixteen point seven million dollar final budget that we approved, your board approved as part of fifteen, sixteen final budget. The general fund is recommended four hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, a decrease of about nine point eight million dollars from the previous year, about two point two percent. The main driver of this decrease, you may recall that with the fifteen, sixteen final budget, your board did allocate almost thirteen million dollars in one-time funding towards certain reserves. That is part of the four hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. That thirteen million dollars went specifically to fund unfunded liabilities, about five point eight million dollars for that, fund open space with a million dollars, to fund additional capital, particularly the roads by two million dollars, and other, and reserves, the general reserve was also increased by a million dollars. There were several reserves and one-time uses that were put, that were funded with that thirteen million dollars. There's also a four point two million dollar increase in salaries and benefits costs in the general fund from year to year, and then we're also moving the building maintenance function, which was an appropriation that was wholly in the general fund, out of the general fund into its own internal service fund to better align the costs and the charges that are associated with those services to the programs that they support. That's pretty much what's going on in the difference in the general fund. With the Public Safety Fund, the, the budget recommended is a hundred and seventy-two point seven million versus a hundred and sixty-three point nine, about a nine point eight million dollar increase. That increase, eight point eight million dollar increase, that increase is, can be wholly attributed to the increase in staffing costs associated with the transition of the hundred and eighty beds and opening those down at the South Placer Facility. You may recall last year in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, we actually only funded half-year costs as they were transitioned in, so those half-year costs for the thirty positions that were added last year need to be funded in sixteen-seventeen, and then in addition, you have half-year funding for the remaining thirty positions that are, that are needed over the course of this fiscal year in there as well. So that's about eight million dollars in total staffing costs, and then you have other increases to CalPERS and health, health benefits as well, and then a slight increase in A-87 or the indirect allocation costs related to depreciation of the jail of about three hundred thousand dollars is built into that budget as well. Road Fund and Capital Projects Fund, taken together, decrease of about thirty-one point two million dollars. That decrease can be pretty attributed to projects that are completing or have been completed, projects like the Kings Beach Capital Core Improvement Project up in the Tahoe area, the animal shelter, and obviously the regional sewer projects as those get done as well. So very likely by final budget, there will be a lot of activity that is, that is adjusted from a technical perspective in the capital projects budgets, as certain projects are slated to have completed for this fiscal year, but to the extent they're not completed, they'll be rebudgeted into next year. So typically the largest technical adjustment you'll see from proposed to final is related to that capital activity. Most of the budget, ninety-six percent of the budget is in those four funds, and then the remaining four percent is in the, the smaller special revenue funds that make up the balance of the operating budget. Moving on to expenditures, and this is the budget as a whole for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, seven hundred and eighty-two point four million dollars. These are our county systems. These are the systems, five, five systems that the county does have, and you can see that the two systems with the largest allocation of recommended funding are the Health and Human Support System with the county's largest department, Health and Human Services in that, and Public Protection with the county's second-largest department, the Sheriff's Department, at two hundred and seventy-eight point six million, or thirty-six percent of the budget. In the Public Protection System, about two hundred and seventy-eight million, as I mentioned, is being recommended, and that's up from about two hundred and sixty-seven point five million in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, about a four percent increase there, and in the Health and Human Support System, we have a two hundred and six point seven million dollar budget up from about a hundred and ninety-five point five the previous year, about six percent increase there as well. Looking at the expenditures by cost category, you can see salaries and benefits makes up the biggest component of cost category at three hundred and fifteen point two million dollars versus the three hundred and three point one million dollars in the year before that, so about a four percent increase in salaries and benefits. Negotiated salaries, to the extent that they have been approved by your board for labor agreements, are included in the budget, however, those that have not been negotiated are not at this point in time. Also, the biggest driver of the increase in salaries and benefits costs, as previously discussed, would be the discussed, would be the increase in retirement and the increase in healthcare costs that are about 8% of the budget as well. Looking at capital, capital again on, on this cost by category makes up about $144.7 million. And just for comparison purposes, when you look at numbers from year to year, they're going to be skewed by what's going on in the capital projects budget. So if the capital project budget shrink, you will see salaries and benefits as a, as a percentage of the whole budget go up. So that's really difficult sometimes to look at this graph from a comparison perspective because of the volatility in the amount of capital that's going on from year to year. Moving on to the revenue sources, in the revenue sources, you can see that local taxes, which includes property taxes, makes up the biggest component of the budget, about $202 million, 26%. Secure property taxes and all components of secure property taxes represent about $148.3 million of that $202 million. And again, we have estimated that that will grow by about 4%. So that 148 includes that 4% anticipated growth. Other major sources of revenue in the revenue schema that you see here for fiscal year 16, 17 include all of the subventions we receive related to delivery of several programs, and most programs in the Health and Human Services Department, in intergovernmental revenue from the state at $176 million, and the intergovernmental revenue from the federal government at just under $100 million there. So you can see we have a wide array of revenue sources that are coming into the county as a whole. Looking at retirement benefits and health benefits countywide, and this is for all county funds, you may recall I presented this graph at the Challenges and Choices for the Public Safety Fund and the General Fund combined, but this is for all county funds. You can see that through 2019, 20, which, for which we have estimated amounts that are anticipated to be paid for retirement from the CalPERS actuarial and then from the OPEB, from the OPEB actuarial as well. It's anticipated that costs will grow about 6.5% per year over, over the other next four or five years. This is significant, and it's a significant cost driver in the budget and really needs to be considered as we put together costs for ongoing programs in the county. So we are looking at this, we're watching this. And when we bring back the final budget in September, we'll update the five-year model that we presented to you with the mid-year report in March, and kind of show you what the impact of this is anticipated to be on funding as a whole in predominantly the general fund and the Public Safety Fund. Moving forward, these are some of the recommended funded position changes for fiscal year 16, 17, in each of the funds in the operating budget. Focus specifically on, on the general fund and the Public Safety Fund and called out a couple of others. From an allocated position perspective, allocated positions are, are recommended to grow by about 55 positions to 2895. Funded positions, however, are recommended to grow by about 67. 23 of those are in the, in the operating funds, and 67 of those are in the, I'm sorry, 44 of those are in the other enterprise and internal service funds. Going through the, yes?
Um, with regards to the staffing costs, I, I know that we have, you know, policies here, and, and I think that sometimes we have this knee-jerk reaction when we want to, when we need someone, that we automatically put somebody on that, you know, is going to make a, you know, is not a contract person. And I think that we need to do a better job of that. I know you've made some recommendations during our discussion for, and this isn't particularly to Tahoe, I want to make that clear. I want to make sure that even in my district, if there are, there are people staffing that we need, that we need to maximize our ability to, to find folks that can do the, the same or similar job without incurring, you know, the OPEB and, and those other things. So I don't know if any other board members have that same, same thought process, but I, I just want to make sure that we're still marching down that road.
Looking at the general fund specifically, in the building maintenance area, I mentioned earlier, we are moving from the general fund appropriation to an internal service fund. You see a reduction in positions in the general fund for that of 42, but you also see an increase of 41 down in the building maintenance function. So there's another position in the general fund for facilities that's being decreased as well. Health and Human Services programs and administration are growing by 11 programs. And just a reminder that the majority of these fund, of these funded positions are funded by state and federal sources. These programs are for environmental health, animal services, the behavioral health area in the adult system of care, and homelessness that was recently approved by your board as part of the auction, the true-up those funded positions that were recently approved in 16, 17. Child support also has workload that is demanding two additional positions in child support services that are fully funded by subvented resources. Administrative services, collections, this is particularly for the TOT area, is one position there. Likewise, one position for county council, an attorney to help support the land development efforts, the significant land development efforts that are going on in the county right now. In the county executive office, we have the two positions that were approved earlier this year for the Business Process Analysis Team, which will begin to focus specifically on the PAS replacement project and how we can implement workflow and efficient business processes for all the financial systems that we have, whether it be PAS and potentially the Human Resource Payroll Management System as well. And the Audit and Controllers Office, we have two, two supervising accountants that were earlier, approved by your board earlier this year. We also have a transfer from the Risk Management ISF, the Internal Service Fund, into CEO for two positions. One of them is a Deputy County Executive Officer, and the other, another one is a Management Analyst. No net up of positions there, just a movement of those positions. Human Resources Deputy Director, one position that was also recently approved by your board. And then we have a net one position add for administrative support related to the County Executive Office and Community Development Resource Agency admin support up in the Tahoe area. We're also looking at using positions in the property management and in the code enforcement area to better support the activities that are going on up in Tahoe. There will be hopefully some support, additional support that we can provide that area, recognizing that there is a workload demand for those services up there as well. So we'll be looking at that. In the Public Safety Fund specifically, some of the main changes are the 32 positions that are associated with the phasing in of the 180 beds at the South Placeta facility. We also have a paralegal in the District Attorney's Office, and then four positions related to the homelessness liaisons that was also recently approved by your board last month. The other area that I want to call out in this slide is in the M-Power area. You can see that there's six positions that are being added to that enterprise fund. These positions are being recommended to be funded, however, will not be filled until demand supports the fulfillment of them. And we will work closely with the Treasure Tax Collector Office to, to make sure that when those, when those positions are filled, if they're filled, that, that we are ready to go in terms of demand. This is an updated chart that was presented as part of the Challenges and Choices Workshop. What this chart does is it shows the, the Challenges and Choices areas that were noted as priority areas that help inform the development of the fiscal year 16, 17 budget. And what I've done here is I've actually included the amount that is in the 15, 16, current year's budget, and then updated the amount that's included as part of the 16, 17 budget. You may recall there was some additional funding that was available and that out of the Challenges and Choices Workshop better informed the ability to balance the budget that's being recommended today. Starting with the Capital Facilities Financing Plan, you can see that we have $8.3 million that's recommended in the current budget. And these are discretionary general fund dollars that are being allocated for, for purposes that are associated with these challenges and choices. That $8.3 million is $4.5 million that your board annually allocates to the Capital Projects Fund, and $3.8 million that your board annually allocates to the Road Fund. Being considered is with the final budget, so depending on carryover fund balance that ultimately ensues between the budget that's adopted today and the final budget that comes back in September, we have $4.4 million in capital. $2 million of that is the roads money that we had in the 15, 16, current year's budget and other capital-related activities as well. Environmental sustainability, we did add the $925,000 for completion of the Placeta County Conservation Plan. That's being recommended as part of this budget. And then the additional million dollars to be considered is related to open space and discretionary funding allocated to that program. Medical marijuana, and that, this is simply a, nothing's being recommended with this budget per se. We do have a $1.2 million supplemental request that was submitted by the Agricultural Commissioner as part of an enforcement proposal that's been put together. So that just, that remains out there depending on the action your board takes with respect to medical marijuana and the approach to that. Placeta County Library System Planning, $275,000 is recommended with the 16, 17 budget. $100,000 of that 275 is specifically to fund all of the A-87 costs as opposed to all but $100,000 of it. And then to put in $175,000 for, specifically for materials to, to become better aligned with the objectives in the Placeta County library strategic plan. $413,000 that is, is on the table right now is the A-87 true-up, and that will be an in and an out from the library fund, so it really won't be a core cost to the general fund. Criminal Justice Master Plan implementation, the $2.3 million is for the remaining 32 positions for the South Placeta facility, that's all that $2.3 million is. And then the $2.1 million is related to the, boy, Criminal Justice Master Plan, that's for the SB 863 match, potentially for the mental health, acute mental health wing of the South Placeta facility. You may recall that your board approved receipt of a $9.5 million grant for approximately $12 million projects, so about $2 million is needed for a match. So that's what that's for. Public Safety Support, $4.2 million specifically for public safety support. $3.1 million of this is for the jail management system that your board recently approved, and that's funded by reserves. The other 1.1 of the 4.2 is for a placeholder that's placed in the 2016, 17 budget for indigent, indigent defense or public defender contract services when that comes back to your board. The $1,085 that is, that is currently on top is for supplemental requests from the Sheriff's Department for a mobile command vehicle, and also for expansion of the take-home vehicle program. And that we'll look at that in terms of priorities as we bring back the final budget. Placeta County Fire Funding, sustainability, $1,098 is for the annual contribution from the general fund discretionary sources to fire, the Fire Control Fund, $1,098 there. And built into the fire system as a whole, the Placeta County Fire System and some of the zones of benefits that we have in this proposed budget is the Third Battalion Chief for the North Auburn O'Farrell area that was taken away and, and been working with CAL FIRE to add that back, and that is funded by the Fire Control Fund. And also the four positions associated with Station 77, the Sunset Station, and adding those four positions back as well, which were fully funded by, by UAIC. Homelessness and Affordable Housing, we have the $1.17 million in discretionary funding that was allocated last month pursuant to action taken by the board, so that is in the budget now. Financial System Replacement, $750,000 there. And this is charged through all funds, so all of this is not just the general fund. A lot of it is, but this is charged through an internal service fund to all the departments in the county, and it's intended to be an ongoing charge to help support the efforts of replacing the county's financial system. So this will be the second year that we've done that. Postemployment liabilities, nothing is being funded right now other than the ARC and one thing, which is the annual required contribution. The annual required contribution today for the OPEB specifically includes the amount of the pay-as-you-go, in other words, what the county pays annually for retiree health on a pay-as-you-go basis. And it also includes an amortized component to buy down the unfunded liability as a whole. You may recall your board approved an update to the policy last year for the OPEB and the approach to the OPEB, moving it to a 15-year amortization schedule from a 30-year amortization schedule. We're one year past that, and the ARC for this year is approximately $27 million. And when you add the amount in the budget that is being recommended to be funded for fiscal year 16, 17, the retiree health component and the amortized component combined are about $29 million. So we are recommending that an additional $2 million above and beyond the ARC go to the OPEB through the charges that we are charging the departments and what we are collecting from the retiree, or what we are paying for retiree health. We also have the CalPERS unfunded liabilities that we'll be bringing back to your board in the very near future with a plan to consider CalPERS unfunded liabilities consistent with the OPEB, OPEB unfunded liabilities. So those are the majority of the supplemental requests that are built into the budget. Just wanted to give you an overview of the, of the special districts budgets. This will come back to your board on June 21st. But the total budget for the special districts is about $40.8 million, and this is where you have your sewer districts, your lighting districts, parks districts, lower by about $33.3 million than in 15, 16. Most of those changes are on the sewer districts as some of those projects wind down. Specifically for the sewer, 33, 30.3 million of the 33 million lower budget is related to those two sewer districts. And again, the final budget will make any technical adjustments to some of these special districts as well. So that will come back in, in September with the final operating budget as well. Finally, with the last slide, additional budget development considerations, some of the next steps when we come back to your board September 13th. Continued phased approach to priority-based budgeting will be considered. Again, the program inventory continues to be refined, and more importantly, we are costing all the programs in the county now. The multi-year capital plan will be available with the 16, 17 final budget. You may recall this is a five-year plan where we're looking at all capital projects in the county. And that plan will be informed also by the Capital Facilities Financing Plan Discussion, which will focus on more core central priority, priority projects. Unfunded liabilities evaluation, that's currently in progress, in process, and we will be bringing that back to the board with a, with an update and a recommended plan for continued pre-funding alternatives. And then the fiscal 16, 17 final budget adjustments will have any technical adjustments, particularly in the capital and the special districts areas, and certain cost distributions like A-87. Updated revenue projections, and once we find out what the true assessed valuation, what the growth in, in property tax will be, we'll update that. And then carryover fund balance true-ups as well. So that's what's on tap for September 13th. And with that done, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Andy. Very comprehensive. I'm glad we've covered this a multitude of times before today. I will start with Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Andy. On the priority supplemental budget under homelessness and affordable housing, you've got almost $1.2 million, and that includes what was approved last, at our last board meeting or last month?
Correct. That, and that is, that is, that is found in three different appropriations in, in the budget. It's found in a sheriff's appropriation for, for positions there, it's found in probation appropriation, it's also found in an HHS appropriation.
Where is the more than half a million dollars that the board has allocated for Right Hand Auburn? Is that in this budget?
I'm sorry, what was it?
The, the more than half a million dollars that, I mean, yeah, half a million dollars that the board has allocated for Right Hand Auburn, where is that in this budget?
That's in the HHS budget, right. And that, that's not in the $1.1 million. So when you look at the amount that, I think I mentioned a $1.8 million amount that's applied to homelessness as a whole, that would include the amount for the temporary shelter.
But there's no recommendation for, in the final budget, for any increase. So I don't know where the affordable housing portion comes in.
There's, there's nothing recommended at this point in time for, for affordable housing per se, but that can be considered.
Well, I think it should be. I think we should put some aside for workforce housing or affordable housing. So now, we, we're having another, next, our next board meeting, we're going to have some more workshop about this, or I don't know when we're going to do this. I was out of the room for a little bit. So are we going to have a workshop regarding the budget before the final budget?
We'll have a workshop for the Capital Facilities Financing Plan that will focus specifically on capital activities on July 25th. The final budget itself will come September 13th, and that will be a public hearing, but those are the only two things that are out there right now for final budget.
All right. Well, I'll just have some, some separate meetings then with you.
Okay.
Jack Kirk, any comments on this?
Yeah, I did have one comment. You know, one of the things, well, first of all, I've read some scuttlebutt, and I've actually had some folks ask me about the communications budget, and that's something that we talked about. There seems to be some misconception that that budget is kind of blown up and gone to $2 million. Can you kind of break down where and how the communications budget was put to Can you kind of break down where and how the Communications Budget was put together and where all those components are, just to get the, just to set the record straight, so, you know, we don't get these wild accusations?
Sure. In, in the proposed budget itself, the Communications Budget is, 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 the cost for that is about $2 million if you look at the, the program as a whole. The way that derives, that way that has been derived over the course of a fiscal year since the communications team has been put together as a team and as a core central cost unit, many of the costs have come from-
And that's a major point, because prior, prior to that, communications pieces were in different places, right?
That's correct, yeah. So-
Go ahead, go ahead. Doing great.
Some of the costs were in the IT budget, where you had the technical support that is now part of the communications team, and the costs associated with that technical support is now in that communications budget. You also had organizational development costs that are now in the communications team, and many of this, much of this work has not changed. In other words, it's just been moved from one budget to another. So it's just a combination of, of all of those costs. And then the increased costs associated with developing communications the way we are now, which is significantly higher than, than it has been in the past.
So again, it's, it's been there, and we're just putting it in one place?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kirk? Anything? Okay. Andy, thank you. I have two questions, and we've discussed both of these before, so it shouldn't take you by surprise. When you were going through the funded position changes, I think I heard, but I, I don't actually see it identified, for Tahoe, that code compliance, parking compliance, and potentially other tasks as assigned position, is that included in this budget?
Yes, it is, yeah. And it's, there, there's no net up associated with that, there was a, there was a net down in the department and then a replacement position, basically.
Okay.
So whether or not those, those allocations get specifically housed in Tahoe, as positions up there remains to be seen, we have to work with that to determine if that's possible.
Okay. And then just something else that you and I have also talked about is, I, I would like, and I'm not proposing that we add anything to our budget or change what we're looking at today, but I would like to take the opportunity as we move forward over the next year to have that discussion about, you know, is there a possibility to incorporate a, a formal detox facility potentially within the acute mental health wing or some other place that it might make sense within existing funding constraints? I think that's something that we, we really need to start thinking about, particularly with the issues that we're seeing of increasing opiate use in Placer County.
Not to note.
Those were my only comments. Any other comments from the board before I open it to the public? All right, any members of the public like to comment on this or weigh in on anything? No? All right, we will bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we are going to adjourn to closed session. Jerry, take us away.
Now, the board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss with legal counsel one item of existing litigation, Foo versus County of Placer.
And Andy, thank you very much. Great presentation.
The board has returned from closed session where it had a conference with legal counsel to discuss a matter of existing litigation, Lori Foo versus County of Placer. The board unanimously approved with Robert Wygant absentee contract with- The board unanimously approved with Robert Wygant absent a contract with Angelo Kilday and Kilduff to represent one of the county employees, a contract in the amount of $50,000. The board also gave direction to county counsel on the case, and no other action was taken. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. Having completed all agendized items, we stand adjourned.